Shop to order at 6:02, and we're going to start with a flag salute. Trustee Corrine?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, and with that, we're going to go to item two, which is a roundtable discussion among the board members and staff with input from the public to address the following topic: Presentation and Discussion on the American Rescue Plan, ARP, Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief, acronym ESSER, funding, to include the law and plan on the use of funds. This again is for discussion only, so no action will be taken. And who's leading us off here? Valerie and AJ?
Good evening, President Cassiopeo, my apologies, and trustees. This evening, we will be presenting on the ESERS, and specifically ESSER III, which has a requirement for a public input, chance for public input. Really quickly, and I in some ways hijacked a little bit of that, this is Valerie's presentation. She's done all the great work with us, but I just wanted to take a couple minutes just to review again kind of where we are. And so Mrs. Dockery is going to talk very broadly about what you can do with these funds and what is available. And clearly, we are not in the same position as others with how we have determined to use those, or hope to use those funds. So, over the past 14 years, our general fund per people revenue has increased at 1.2% per year. So as you know, that's far less than costs. And so that, you know, thinking about the long-term impact of that and where we are and what we've talked about, that's an important number. Due to the impact of full-day kindergarten, that gets a little more complicated, but it actually ends up being less than 1%. In the past three years, our per people amount has decreased, on average, compounding at minus 0.88%. Through the 1970s and 1980s, it was going up at 9.2% per year. So it's a really, really substantial difference from where we are now. We have cut about $5 million in expenses from the general fund in the past three years. And due to the impact of COVID, the legislature did add money back to education, but not enough to offset the impact of the new funding model, which we've discussed in the past. And just a reminder of kind of where we ended up, we are a district that is considered in a hold harmless state. Our revenues on a per pupil basis are less than what we received in fiscal year '20. And so that's pretty significant, unlike some districts like Clark County, which has a significant increase in overall funding. So the choices that they are making with how they use ESSER funds, and their recommendations are very different than the recommendations, I should say very, but there are differences in the way we're expecting to hoping to use funds. And I've shown you this image before, but just a reminder that that per pupil funding amount is going to be relatively flat in the blue going forward. And so one of the uses of ESSER funds that Mrs. Dockery covers is about maintaining programs. And so that is a primary way that we are looking to use these funds. And with that bit of detail and rain cloud, oh, you have one? I'll let Mrs.
Thank you. Good evening, board members and community. For the record again, I'm Valerie Dockery. I'm the Director of Grants and Special Projects for the school district. And in terms of the American Rescue Act and the funding we've received, we've actually received actually three pots of money. The first pot, we're not discussing tonight, which is the very first round of funding, and that was spent in the last fiscal year. So we were able to use that to cover many of the expenses associated with the coronavirus, and that has been spent down to basically very little left going forward. So what we're talking about tonight is ESSER, what we call ESSER II. And every time they added to this relief act, they changed the name of it. So it's very confusing. So the first one that was signed, the second one that was signed in December of 2020, it was called the Corona Response and Relief Supplemental Appropriation, CHRISAA, like we need more acronyms. And under that, the Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief Fund, ESSER II. And then in March of 2021, just a few months later, they signed into law the Elementary and, the American Rescue Plan, which we call ARP, and the Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief Fund. So they kept the Porsche, the name of the portion that goes to schools, public schools, the same, but they changed the overall name of the bill. So, in providing funds under both of these, they, the U.S. Department of Education has priorities for this funding, and the priorities were pretty virtually the same for both pots of money, ESSER II and ESSER III. So here we have addressing learning loss through evidence-based improvements, that's their big priority. In ESSER III, it's 20% has to go to learning loss, trying to help students who have suffered learning loss due to the pandemic. The money can also be used for school facilities, repairs and improvements, planning for long-term closures, including providing meals to eligible students. Now, our students are all getting free breakfast and lunch through the National School Lunch Program, so we don't really need these funds to address that. Addressing unique needs of special populations, purchasing educational technology, and any activities authorized under ESEA, the Elementary and Secondary Education Act, which would include Title I for poverty, schools in poverty, Title II for professional development, Title III, which is services for English learners, Title IV, which is innovative programs, McKinney-Vento, which serves our homeless youth, the Perkins, Career and Technical Education, any of those things, IDEA, special education could also be, we could support those programs with these funds. We can also coordinate with other state and local entities to prevent, prepare, and respond to COVID-19. And the U.S. Department of Education, there's more, more, so there's, I think, 16 altogether areas that you can utilize the funds for. Providing social and emotional mental health services, providing summer learning and supplemental after-school programs, including online. As you'll see as we go forward, last summer's summer school program was funded under ESSER II. Conducting, and this is where we're really going to hover, where we're spending most of our funding, conducting other activities necessary to maintain the operation of services, employ existing staff, increase instructional hours that were reduced due to COVID, and coordinate activities. And so this covers just the basic operations of a school district. We can also purchase cleaning supplies. We can train staff on sanitation to minimize the spread of infectious disease. We can have procedures to improve school preparedness, and we've done all of these things, just not with these funds. Administrative expenses, which represent an increase over previously budgeted amounts. We don't have anything where we're going to be claiming there. And indirect costs using the negotiated restricted rate. So for Carson City, that's 7.13%. That's a rate that we can take on any federal grant that the district can use to just maintain, again, payroll, all the things that you have to run in order to maintain a grant. The services out of my office, a grant analyst, the work that I do, is all covered under that negotiated restricted rate. Then, on top, a layer on top of that is the Nevada Department of Education has also, and the State Board of Education also has priorities for these funds. And they're very similar, and they overlap. So if you are addressing the state board priorities, you're addressing the federal priorities and vice versa. We are closing the opportunity gaps for students that are traditionally underserved, accessing, access to technological capacity for educators, students, and families, social, emotional support for students, educators, and staff in response to COVID-19, access to high-quality professional development, access to high-quality instructional materials for educators and students, supporting of parents, families, and communities, safe, efficient, equitable reopening of schools, and access to adult education and workforce development. So again, going back to this slide, we're going to be hovering tonight on the blue, conducting other activities necessary to maintain the operation of, and employ existing staff. So, under this, there's requirements for this funding. They don't just, you know, it doesn't just land up in one of AJ's accounts. You have to provide applications and certain materials. Our strategic plan, for instance, that's, you have to have a strategic plan that you must, you must tie to your, the needs and the use of funds. You have to have a district needs assessment, which we completed last year for ESSER II. You have to have a safe return to in-person instruction plan, which all of you are knowledgeable about from previous meetings. You have to have stakeholder input, and you have to have a district use of funds plan, which I will put together, which will match our, after tonight, which will match our funding plan to our needs assessment and our strategic plan. So, ESSER II was $4,412,181. That was available, it's available through September 20, 30th, 2023. And that's important as you look at how we are looking at spending this money, because we're not looking at spending this money just in this fiscal year. And that includes, excuse me, the summer of that year. And then ESSER III is $9,916,387, available through September of 2024, including that summer. And it's important to note that these funds are on the federal calendar, so they are actually available, the federal calendar runs from October 1 through September 30. And so, and when we look, when we got these funds, we got them so late last year, including ESSER II, that really what our budget planning has been, has been for FY '22, this fiscal year, and beyond. And there's a link to, if you would like to see what every district got in the state in terms of this funding, under this relief plan, under all three of the funding plans, the first one that I spoke about, the CHRISAA, and then the CARES Act, excuse me, and then ESSER II and III, you can click on this link, and go to this link, and you can look at all the, what every district in the state got under all three pots. And this was based on, all three pots were based on a percentage of funding that was provided to each district under the Title I allocations to the state. The state came up with a formula and awarded the funds based on how they award Title I, which is funding for poverty schools. So, I'm going to let AJ talk, do you want to talk about this? You want me to? Okay. So our first one is our CHRISAA, ESSER II funding plan, and I'm going to let AJ talk about some of these pieces.
Okay, so, one of the things that is complicated about this, and really it forced us to do a lot of planning and forecasting on costs, is that the state wants us to budget this out as long as we're going to use it. So, ESSER II here, you'll see there's actually two years of budget, but within ESSER III, you're actually going to see three years. And so, as much as there are things written down here, and there are costs associated with them, I would ask that, when it comes to fiscal '24, you don't come back to us and say, "You said you were going to use it on this," because things change, right? And we don't know exactly how that's going to play out. Right now, this is our best estimate. Next year is really clear, and then the years after, based on how things change, and maybe in fiscal '24, after the legislative session, things really improve. And then maybe we can do more with some learning loss towards the end. So I just, I don't want you to get too held up on exactly what you see here, but as, what you see, especially for fiscal '22, this is how we're planning on, or suggesting we use it, and this is what we would be submitting to the Department of Education. So, first, one distance ed teacher, so as you know, Pioneer has opened themselves up into this Pioneer Academy, and so they are servicing more kids online. And so we have used those funds to pay for that position. We have three teachers on special assignment within Humanities or Social Studies, GATE, and CTE. That's listed there, but you can see that's actually going off into fiscal '23. And actually, maybe it'd be easier, I'll just talk about fiscal '22, and then I'll just add in '23, sorry. One high school counselor, salary and benefits for them. All 12 of our social workers would be paid for by ESSER II. 11 of our ESL staff, and those were staff that in prior year were paid for by the Zoom grant. And then, in the yellow, Mrs. Dockery put that in there so you could see specifically what we're talking about, for things that are kind of more related, this idea of learning loss. And even though it's not necessarily required in ESSER II, it's still, I think, important to see what is kind of new and extra on top of what the normal, kind of normal year, normal staffing is. So, running the summer school program, about $65,000, and then running transportation for that program. Indirect costs, so as Valerie stated, it's kind of this overhead for actually taking care of the grant and running it behind the scenes. And then Carson Montessori School also gets an allocation of those funds. The change in FY '23, the addition again of the three TOSSAs, and then the work-based learning coordinator position is also added in. In FY '23, those learning loss components go away, because those will actually shift over to ESSER, ESSER III. For ESSER III, in the first two years, '22 and '23, we have the 10 interventionist positions across the district, and that's very much related to the learning loss activities. And again, 20% of the total of ESSER III has to be dedicated toward learning loss. So these are truly all new things that we're doing actively and on top of our normal activities. Five distance education staff to support programs at Pioneer and Carson High. One EL Assistant Director. Then, the after-school programming for this year, transportation for that programming, planning on purchasing Chromebooks, the next round of Chromebooks, and software to support staff and students during that time, all within fiscal year '22. When you get to FY '23, we add in 14 class-size-reduction teachers. So this is effectively teachers that were paid under the class-size-reduction funding last year. It's not, they will go into the general fund this year, but in the following year, again, because our revenues are flat, but our salaries are increasing, we need to move some more costs out of the general fund. So these costs are coming out of the general fund and moving into ESSER III. And then, when you get to FY '24, again, a couple shifts, the social workers, they move from ESSER II to ESSER III, and the ESL staff that were Zoom-funded, that then became ESSER II-funded, they now become ESSER III-funded in FY '24. In all three years, you'll note that the Chromebooks also carry through that entire time. So the plan is keeping that program going, keeping those purchases happening. I will say that, you know, there are probably going to be more opportunities, that we're aware of other opportunities coming up for technology, and maybe that can supplement some of this as well. So, again, a lot of these things, I think, are going to change over the coming year, as we all kind of figure out where we are. So, clearly, I think, just in my final point, I'll let Valerie take over again, is that there are, when you get to fiscal '24, there are still a lot of positions that, if that federal funding, I should say, when that federal funding goes away, we have to figure something out, right? And the fortunate thing is that we are a couple of years down the road there, so there's a lot of time to plan that out. And there's another legislative session before we get to that point. So, it's just something that, you know, to keep in mind. But we're trying to keep the programming that we have in place, all the supports we have for kids in place, as long as we can, until we have time to maybe sort out what are maybe some different ways to do some of these things.
So AJ, can I ask you a question?
Yes.
When you look at the class-size reduction, is there a study of what that would look like if we started to, kind of, as people retire, maybe we look at increasing class size? Are we looking at what those numbers are and what that impact would be? Because I think that's going to help us as a board really figure out, that's a lot of money.
No, that's a really good point. We, at this point, we've not gone through that, but clearly, you're talking about, that's about 300 students that would be in classes of 25, say. So you're going to be spreading that out amongst existing staff, that could be problematic. So then looking at what those ratios are, and trying to, trying to keep those ratios where we want them to be. But that's a really good point. That's ultimately, that's the exercise we're going to have to go through as time goes on.
Well, and that's going to help us advocate for additional funding to the legislature, because if it just looks like, oh, we have these federal grants, so we'll just shift it over here for a few years, but actually, what we're looking at is we're impacting, you know what I'm saying? I think we're going to need that information, because we're going to have to make sure people understand exactly what that means, because on a spreadsheet, it sounds one way, but the real-world implications are going to be pretty bad for our kids.
Any other questions for me? Otherwise, I'll let Mrs. Dockery take over, and you can have questions at the end, so.
So yes, so we're up, yes, thank you. Yeah, and I think a lot, you know, also that AJ didn't talk about is that in that last session, so much was dumped into the general fund dollars, and, but not really enough to support some of these programs. And that's why we're trying to prop them up with some of these other funds. Class-size reduction was always a separate allocation. It's no longer Zoom, EL funding was a separate allocation, GATE was a separate, those are not, you know, those are not true anymore. So, so it's just, there's a lot going on here.
Yeah, and I just want to be clear, I'm not advocating that we don't support these programs. What I'm saying is, we need to be very clear about what the impact of these cuts are to our district.
Other questions, comments from anybody?
Just to kind of follow up on what Mike Walker said, is one of my main concerns, and I think I've expressed it before, is what happens down the road, and what planning needs to take place between now and then, like Mr. Walker was saying. That is my main concern, because we're going to be, what, $5 million deficits every year going forward for how many years? I don't know. And so I think the sooner we can make a plan, the better off we're going to be, because there's some programs we have to do, right? I mean, like the ESL, yeah, you can't cut that, you know? And there's other programs that cannot be cut. So that's my main concern. But, good presentation, thank you.
I'm guessing that the fiscal year '25, this is not just our district problem, this is going to be a statewide problem, correct? Everybody's going to lose their funds.
So, yeah, absolutely, everyone will lose their funds. The difference comes into the impact of this change in the funding formula. So for the districts that are in this hold harmless state, like we are, that's where your revenues are not going to be increasing for such an extended period of time, and you're backfilling with these ESSER funds, that's where the real problem is. For districts like Clark, you know, they're, all of their funds are going to be additional things. Quite honestly, I don't know, they have a billion dollars to spend. I have no idea how they're going to do that. But whatever they bring on will go away, but they're, otherwise, their normal programming would remain.
I guess that's the concern for fiscal '25 down the road.
Right.
Are these, you know, these few counties hold harmless, is that going to be enough pressure on the legislature to act?
That's, that's, that's the question, because they have so much clout in Washoe and Clark, and, and so the smaller districts in this funding formula are not as favored in the new funding formula.
Thank you.
And AJ and Valerie, I think it's a rhetorical question, but it's not like we have enough money to cover all our expenses. Like you said, we're obviously short even with this. But if we have a banner year for whatever reason, and we don't have to spend a certain amount of money, say, in that first fiscal year, can that be carried over to a later year? Or is it kind of a, once you set it up, that's how it has to be used?
No, we will put in our application for FY '22, and we will say in there what we're earmarking for future. The state will say, you need to, we want you to spend it all this year. They would like you to do that, but the tidings amendment allows us to spend it over three years, so we can carry forward into 20, into three years for ESSER III and II for ESSER II, because technically, ESSER II came out last year.
Right.
So, so we'll be able to do that and extend it. They would prefer we spent it all at one time, but we, there's, we can't, and that wouldn't be, we wouldn't be serving the needs of the district if we did that. So we'll be able to, the other important point with this is, for those of you like Mr. Walker who are familiar with federal funding, there's no supplanting issues here. In most federal funding, for example, under Title I, I couldn't pay for a class-size-reduction teacher, because that's something that's in the general fund. It can't be, it can't be funded. Under these emergency relief funds, there is no supplement, supplant, so we do have flexibility to move things around. And we're also not subject to, to risk assessment issues where we're putting in too many amendments. They think we're putting in too many amendments. So we can change this up as we need to, and have some flexibility to meet the needs as they change over time.
Thank you. Rich?
If I'm hearing right, every year, you had to put in an application for the funding?
The first application, ESSER II application, we actually submitted last year, but now we have to go back and revise it, because we didn't know about it. We didn't have ESSER III, and we didn't have it, we didn't have the funding amount. So we will go back, we will submit ESSER III. It's due September 10. We'll submit before that date. And then we will go back and revise ESSER II, so that it reflects the changes that we've made. And then, at any other time throughout the year, we can make a change if we need to, but then, for the next fiscal year, we'll submit a new budget. Well, that, it's a, it's a carryover process. You know, we've closed the fiscal year, and then we ask for the money going forward.
Right. You know, I've written numerous grants in the past myself, and some of them you have to do every year, and they're not guaranteed that you're going to get in the next year. So I didn't know if this ESSER money was guaranteed to be set aside for the districts.
This is an allocation, and we are getting the whole $9 million, $9. This is an allocation, and we, we are getting the whole $9 million, nine point nine, this year, but we don't have to spend it all this year. So we are guaranteed this amount of funding, and, but we, and we have three years to spend it, we have two years to spend S R two.
Okay, good, thank you.
Any other questions on the board? Anything from you folks? If not, we, I know we have some public here, and this, we've allotted some public input. So if anybody from the public would like to ask any questions, please come up to the microphone. And again, just state your name for the record.
Is that on? Good evening, my name is Sheila Storey, I'm the chief nurse for the school district and school nurse at Carson High School. Thank you for allowing me to speak this evening. I first want to say that last year was a busy year for us, and we did it. We got through everything. I would like to report that with all of our added responsibilities with COVID-19 testing, contact tracing, and everything we did, we also did complete all of our health screenings in accordance with N R S. We were within ninety, about 93% as a district, compliant with our immunizations. We did do our Medicaid reimbursement. We completed every single thing we were required to complete for a school year, along with all the COVID and everything. So I think my, my staff did an excellent job at each of their schools. This year, we're kind of heading in the same direction in regards to wanting to comply with all the N R Ss with height and weight screenings, or not, vision and hearing screenings, immunization compliance, and Medicaid reimbursement. They also like us to reintroduce the Teladoc systems within our office, along with COVID testing, students who are symptomatic, and then also with the directive from the governor, Directive forty-eight, continue to COVID test individuals who do not have both vaccinations for athletes, but also other school activities, which we are happy to do and happy to help out with. But I will say, last year was very, very tiring on our health services staff. And we need support, we need support this year to get through all of this. I mean, I, I stay awake at night going, how are we going to do this? How are we going to continue to do every single thing that is absolutely required of us in accordance with N R S, along with COVID testing, along with contact tracing? We need help. And also, our nurses need to be compensated for their time. And as I read this S R money, I do believe that we, we will, we are a coordinator with local entities to prevent, prepare, and respond to COVID-19. We are, let's see here, where else is, let's see here, I have this all, I have this all We want to, we, we're there for the social and emotional support of our students. And let me give you an example. So you have a student who thinks they possibly came in contact with someone with COVID-19. They are scared, they're frightened, they're crying, their parents are upset. And you know what we provided last year with doing the Abbott-Bionax testing and the Ties testing? We offered them a peace of mind. We offered them, sure, come on in, our door is open for you, we will take you in, we will test you, we will give you your results, and then we will ease your mind if the, if, if the results are negative. So with their social, emotional, I believe we truly did help faculty, staff, parents, and students with just having a relief that they knew that they were negative, along with the education that we provided to them in regards to what they do if symptoms start to occur, how long they have to stay home, who to follow up with. We were a great educational source, just not for our school district, but also for our community, okay? So social and emotional, we truly did help them out, all right? We are also, we are there to support parents, families, and our community, okay?
Sheila?
Yes.
I apologize, I, I should have made a statement that we're, we're still going with the three-minute rule.
Okay, sorry.
And I didn't give you a warning, I apologize.
Okay, no worries. So anyway, in closing, I just want to let you know, with this S R funding, you cannot forget our department. We need assistance. I cannot do it this year. I did 12 to 13 hours last year, I didn't sleep, it was an extremely difficult year. We did it, and our nurses did it, and our clinical aides did it, we did a great job. But with this S R money, I want our department in this funding source.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
I mean, I would just say to Sheila, I think we, we appreciate and acknowledge the amount of work that went in, and we have teachers saying the exact same thing, they were doing digital learning, in-person learning, and I E Ps at night and early in the morning. And so last year was so crazy for everyone in education. And I think one of the things that when we look at this funding, it's, it's a godsend because it's going to allow us to kind of extend, which would be a very painful year for this school district without that funding. And so how we use the funds, it's not which is most deserving, we're trying to lessen the impact of some pretty dire circumstances. And so just understand that, that we're trying to support all of our employees as best as we can with very limited resources. And so hopefully you all know how much you're appreciated.
Thanks, Mike Laurel.
Question for A J, with our funding for the nurses, are, because my understanding with this S R funding is that you're telling us where you're budgeted, but we still have our general fund, which is still budgeted, and we still have our budget for nursing staff, is that that's being paid for through the general fund?
Correct, yeah.
Okay.
And effectively, if you, if you move the nursing staff into that grant, you would just be moving whatever, something else from that grant back to the general fund at this point.
And that this is a finite amount of money, it's only good for a certain number of years. So what we put in it, we need to be careful too, because it's going to end in, in 2024. So, you know, we can add, we can add more things or more staff, like in our learning loss with our interventionists, right, that we have in there right now, but there, right now, we only have money for a cer, a certain period of time for that staff.
And is, I mean, and I know there's a nursing shortage, just like there's a teaching shortage, but maybe there's something we could do to work with one of the nursing schools, and maybe we could bring in some nursing students who are able to do some of that COVID testing, and maybe take some of those things off of the hands, or even like vaccinations, whatever. I mean, we could get a little bit creative and see if there's partnerships we could forge.
So Sheila Storey, for the record, I, we are a preceptor for Orvis School of Nursing, and we do take on nursing students on Thursdays and Fridays in the fall. They are limited in regards to what their scope of practice is within the clinical setting. Our health offices are a community setting, it is a clinical setting, and we only have them on Thursdays and Fridays. W N C does not do community health clinicals.
I was just checking, I have a kind of a conflict, I am related to Sheila, but I do have a couple of questions. Is there any possibility of getting some money for nurses through this S R?
And I think, based on my understanding of it, I think any nursing-related activities would qualify as an eligible expense. The, the issue goes back to if, if we would use these funds to, to pay for that, then something else has to come out of the grant, and it has to go into the general fund where the nursing costs came from. There's, effectively, at this point, it's almost like S R is, or in the general fund are one. And so it, it almost doesn't matter where you pay for it, there's just a finite pot of money, you can only pay for so much.
You know, and we can, we can also keep our eye out for other funding sources that are coming down the pike. I know there's a big mental health grant coming out of the state soon, we're keeping our eye on that, that may have a health services component in it. So we'll obviously be keeping our eye out for other sources, for other pieces within here besides S R two and three.
Well, and I'm just thinking, if there is a mental health grant, then that may be some swapping with our social workers and the nursing staff. I, I do like the nursing staff coming out of the general fund, because that's something I, I hope we as a district continue to have. I, not very many districts have registered nurses as school nurses, and I'm really grateful that we have that, because I know even before COVID, there are so many things that they do each day to provide for the, the students. We have type one diabetics, we have kids who are needing medications throughout the day, that they, they take care of. It's, it's, it's not the bandage thing that you think of growing up and, and, and going to school, what a school nurse does. They, they're absolutely vital, and I think that that's really important, that we keep that. So part of me says, I don't want it to be grant-funded, because I wouldn't want it to go away. So.
You know, I mean, just on that same thought, just kind of like where I was kind of going with the conversation, maybe it's kind of like we were talking with the school librarians, and maybe it's looking at workload, and how do we lighten some of the load? So if they're so overwhelmed that they can't get to what they need to do, I mean, trust me, if our, our ends walk away, we don't have a line of our ends to replace them with. I mean, I've been going through this all summer, trying to hire a nurse for my school. So maybe that's something that as a district, we need to look at, what is it? So maybe it's not that we use S R funds to pay a salary, because that's just going to move money from one category to the other. Maybe it's, what are some pieces that you need support with, and how could we think creatively to support that? And so if there are student nurses in there, maybe it's some kind of teaming up where maybe, you know, some schools have students who have tube feedings, and they need a nurse there, or medications that require something all day, but sometimes you don't have that caseload. And so maybe Lana has a little bit of time, and she could run over and help out at the high school for an hour, and give Sheila time to catch up on whatever she needs to do. So maybe we need to start coming together and looking at some of those resources in addition to just funding to support the employees.
No, it's a challenging time with limited funds, we get it, and, and, you know, all these pieces of our puzzle are equally as important. So Sheila, to your point, we understand. I mean, if we could find a way to do something more, I think everybody's, I think everybody's looking for that. So A J, just, as you're going through that, I'd like to, you know, keep them in mind for sure, because they do provide a critical function.
I think one of the unfortunate things that has happened with this funding that has come out, there's been a perception across the state that this money is, is all, there's all this extra money, and now you can do whatever you want. And, and the Department of Ed has actually put that out there, when in fact, in the smaller districts, that is not the case. It may be the case in Washoe and Clark, but it is not the case in the small rurals. So there has been a perception, I, I get, I get emails daily about how I can spend my S R funds. I get calls daily from people on how to spend S R funds.
Right.
And, and it's just not this panacea that is being, is out there, the perception is out there for the smaller districts. It's, as A J has explained, that's not the reality, unfortunately for us. It is the reality in, in Washoe and Clark, but it's not the reality for us.
And just to echo what we talked about earlier after the legislative session, there was a lot of, you know, patting themselves on the back that they put so much money into education, when really, it was just restoring the cuts that were made. And so I think that that's, that's.
Partially restoring the cuts.
Partially restoring, yeah, not even fully restoring them. So there, that's something, and then there are, there are nine districts who are out of seventeen that are in the hold harmless, that have received less funding. Unfortunately, they're, they're prob, you know, us Douglas and Elko are the largest counties. It's, it's going to take some, some advocating on behalf of public education in order to help get that changed, turned around by the time this funding is run out.
Any other input from anybody in attendance?
Mr. Cassiopoul, I had received one public comment that was provided via email. Thank you. This public comment is provided from Beverly Singleton. She's a special ed para at Fritsch Elementary. She'd like to offer input on how a portion of the S R funding should be utilized. I believe there's a need for staff that can give extra support to the general ed students to help fill the gaps due to learning loss. These are the students who may fall through the cracks, so you'd say. They are the average students that often don't get extra support because they aren't E L L or on an I E P. After missing months of in-class instruction, whether due to the shutdown or hybrid learning, many are struggling to catch up to pre-pandemic expectations. Teachers are doing their best to meet the needs of all their students, but it can be overwhelming. Secondly, we need better ventilation systems in some areas. According to an article on physics.org dated April 5th entitled, "Studies Show Masks Ventilation Stop COVID Spread Better Than Social Distancing." And she provides information from, by Robert Wells from the University of Central Florida. A new study from the University of Central Florida suggests that masks and a good ventilation system are more important than social distancing for reducing the airborne spread of COVID-19 in classes. This research, excuse me, research was also published in the Journal of Physics of Fluids. When we have areas in schools with no windows and insufficient ventilation, we're doing, we aren't doing our best to protect students and staff. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional comments related to this workshop?
No, Mr. Cassiopoul, thank you.
I just wanted to point out that we have ten, I brought this slide back up, we have ten teachers and paraprofessionals to provide interventions during today to any student, any student that needs it. And, and this was something that the principals requested. They requested this extra staff to work during the day, and also money to do before and after-school programs and transportation for those programs. And those requests came directly from the principals to, to do just what the email was talking about, was to provide those extra supports.
Okay, thank you. Okay, any additional comments? Okay, seeing none, I appreciate your time. Thanks for the presentation.
We just have some resources up here, just if you would like to take a look at these. Of course, anyone is, is, you know, can call me or email me with questions about the funding, I'd be happy to help. The Department of Ed has a website for federal relief funding. On that website, there's links to the, there's a funding memorandum on S R two, there's a quest, there's a lot of information on the American Rescue Plan, there's a guide for school districts and planning to use these monies. And then there's also frequently asked questions from the Department of Ed. So lots of resources, and I'm happy to answer any, any questions that anybody might have. They can give me a call or email me.
Great, thank you, Valerie. Thank you, A J. Okay, we're going to go ahead and adjourn until seven o'clock, and we'll start the, the board meeting itself. So we'll see everybody back here in about 12 minutes.
We're going to go ahead and get started. It's seven o'clock, so we're going to call this meeting back to order. Item three is going to be adoption of the agenda as submitted. This is for possible action.
So moved.
Motion in a second. Any board comment on this agenda? Any public comment on this agenda? Renee, anything from you?
No, Mr. Cassiopoul, thank you.
Okay, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Item four, superintendent's report. This is for information only. Richard?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board, members of the community, welcome. I'd like to let you know that on September the 2nd at 6:00 PM, we will hold our joint meeting with the Board of Supervisors. So we're in the current work effort of establishing an agenda. If any members of the trustees have items that you'd like to see on the agenda, please let me know, and I'll work with the city manager to make sure that those items are addressed. I also wanted to let not only trustees but also members of the community know that there are some changes to school vaccine exemptions. This does not mean the COVID-19 vaccinations, but these are school-related immunizations that are required to attend school. The new forms that have been devised and will be used will be available at the individual schools. And some of the other changes are that the religious exemption must be renewed annually. I know in the past, this was something that was done once, and then that was kind of it for the career of the student. But legislation has changed that part of it, and so religious exemptions must be renewed annually. And with regard to medical exemptions, that particular process will require documentation from a physician, which must be attached to the form. So again, these new forms can be obtained by attending your local school and asking for one. Our staff is in the process of returning to work at their school offices and classrooms. First day of school is August the 16th, which is a week from yesterday. So it's exciting times as we get ready to start school again. And with that, I just wanted to take a little bit of time, knowing that this school's school year's return has elicited a number of very strong emotions. And I'm happy to report that we are returning to school five days a week and in person, which is significantly different than our last year. We are also happy to report that all of our educational programs will be operational. So transportation, nutrition, IEPs, all of the aspects of school that you have come to expect will be working and operational. And these are all good things. These are all great things for our kids, for our community. And I wanted to add that with the most recent change with the information that we received from the governor, the school district is not requiring students to wear face masks in the coming school year. However, staff must wear face masks, and as must all adults who are in the building, whether or not you're a parent, whether or not you are a volunteer, whether or not you are just there visiting as a vendor or have some other business at the school. Adults must wear face masks in the building. The next item is that students and staff both must wear face masks while on the buses, and that's part of the governor's mandate. So please remember that last year, with regard to student health, it was a different time. We had a hybrid schedule. We had two cohorts of students that were both at home and at school. Everybody wore face masks. And under all of the newness and the uncertainty that went on with last school year, we were able to keep our schools mostly open. We had one occasion early in the school year where transportation was closed for several weeks, and that was because we didn't have enough people to operate our buses. And that was after we had several cases of COVID. We were also able to only have one school that was actually closed for two days. And again, that was because conditions were high right at the weekend, and staffing and also the concern that we might have students that would cause a greater outbreak. We did close that school for two days. We had other situations in the school district where we had students that were sent home because they were symptomatic. We had staff who were sent home because they were symptomatic. And we also had several classrooms that when we found there were students that tested positive that were sent home. So all in all, I want us to be able to have some optimism and some encouragement as we move forward into the school year. I had a report today from the principal at Carson High School. They held freshman orientation today. He didn't stop and count and give me numbers, but he said, looking up into the faces of the students, there were about half of the audience that were not wearing face masks and half that were. And so kids are managing. Kids are figuring out how to live within a very uncertain world. I know that there's been a lot of fear, a lot of uncertainty, a lot of care. And I'm not saying that we shouldn't all be that way. I'm just saying that we have to take into account how people are feeling, how they're expecting us to respond to them as school leaders. And we'll take the school year a day at a time, and as conditions change, we're certainly going to modify our conditions. As we did last year, if you remember, about once a month during the first half of the school year, we brought more students back to the schools and made those changes as we knew more about what was happening. So there's a number of things that have happened this year that we don't have this year. One is that the number of our students, number of our staff, number of our community members have been vaccinated. So that's one thing that's different. That's a different variable that we need to take into account this year. And so as things continue to change, we're going to be sensitive to our friends from the Health Department and working with them closely, taking their guidance, their advice, and certainly trying to do the best thing for our community. So with that, Mr. President, members of the board, that ends my report.
Great, thank you Superintendent Stokes. And I did, I got reminded, I need to mention that we are in a public building, and the mandate, I think it's 48 and it references back to 45, that masks are required in a public building. With that said, we're going to move on to item five, Board Reports, Board Member Comments. This is for information only. And Mike, start with you.
So Mark Twain is gearing up for an exciting school year, and they would like to announce that they will be having their kindergarten meet and greet on Friday the 13th from 4:00 to 5:00. So they hope to meet a lot of their new kindergarten families and see their smiling faces.
Thank you.
Dr. Conley from Eagle Valley Middle School, the principal, wanted to announce back-to-school boot camp, which is this Thursday, August 12th. 3:00 to 4:30 PM will be for the 6th graders. And then after that, 4:30 to 6:00 PM will be for 7th and 8th graders. Limited parking due to the construction, so he asks for the parents and everybody to be patient. It will help get everybody through if you update your registration online. And then from Carson High School, Blue Thunder Marching Band, they are in their second week of band camp. And they will conclude band camp this Friday with a presentation at 6:00 PM for parents and whoever else would like to come on the football field. And they're ready to go. There's actually a football game, August 20th, Friday, a home game. So the band will be there, and I assume the football team will be there as well.
Be good to have a football team if there's a game. Okay. Laura, before we start with you, I know Stacy is participating remote. Do we still have her?
Trustee Wilkie, can you hear us?
Yeah, I can hear.
Why don't we go to you, Stacy, for an update?
Nothing for me.
All right. Laura?
Okay, for Fritch Elementary School, on August 13th, they are having a back-to-school open house, and the PTA will be doing an ice cream social, which is a wonderful event, from 4:00 to 5:30. And then on that same night, if you have time and the stomach for it, at Fremont Elementary School, they are also having a back-to-school open night, PTA Ice Cream Social. So I will be double dipping, if you will, from the two different ice creams that night. Also, Fremont would like us to know and like to announce to parents, let me get it pulled up, that they are also, on Monday, August 16th, they will meet their students outside with Kinder in First in the front of the building and Second through Fifth in the back parking lot. And so if anyone has questions, they are happy to have them call the school to make sure you know where to meet your teachers outside that first day of school. And then just, I'd like to take a little minute to thank our staff and all of our staff. This time last year before school started, there were a lot of unknowns, and there were a lot of fears. And there were staff that had health concerns of their own that they put aside their fears to come back to school to teach our kids. And they showed up, and they did a great job. We have kids who, at the high school, who took their AP exams and have, some of them are getting their scores back, and these kids passed those AP tests when the teachers had them for half, a third of the time that they did. They couldn't even cover all the material that was on those tests. So I know it's gonna, we're not off this ride yet, but I just wanted to put it out there that I appreciate all our staff who showed up last year and who always put what was best for the kids first. And I think that is, it was an unusual year. And I know that there's kids that had struggles, and there's kids, but it's still better than it would have been had they been all fully remote the whole year. So I just want to thank everyone for their efforts and wish everyone a successful year this year as well.
Thank you. Richard?
Yes, from Bordeur Bray, the parents would like everyone to know that Friday, August 13th, they're having their back-to-school night. It's a greet and meet, meet and greet, and a family barbecue. Students can get their teacher assignments that night and meet the teacher and see their classroom. And then families are then invited to the back playground to enjoy a hot dog and chips. They want to remind people that first day of school is August 16th. And then on Sunday, September 19th, there'll be Bordeur Bray Day at the Reno Aces, and tickets will be on sale soon. So just watch the link on Parents Square if you want to go and get tickets for that game. And also, I just want to take a minute to welcome the teachers back to school. They start tomorrow, and I hope they have a successful year under these trying, difficult times that they're going to be facing again this year, I think. And also, I'd like to welcome the kids back to school next Monday and hope they have a successful year. Also wanted to, I had the opportunity to, in the new hire orientation this last week, and we had a new person who was kind of coordinating the event, Mary Prey. She did an excellent job, and I think for the first time out, she's to be commended. And I'd just like to give her the kudos that she deserves for putting on such a good event for the new teachers. And I think she'll be a great asset in that position. So that's my report.
Great, thank you. Yeah, the new hire event was well put on. It was well attended. It was fantastic. So it's nice to see the year starting. I think certainly from my perspective, I'd love to see it starting a little differently, but we are where we are. But I do hope we have a successful year, and we can come together and help these kids be the best they can be. The only report I have tonight is I just wanted to take a minute to congratulate somebody from northern Nevada. Anybody who follows the Olympics knows that we had kind of a local celebrity, Krista Palmer. She won a bronze medal in the three-meter springboard for diving. She was, I believe she was born in Carson City, went to school in Douglas County. And I just clipped the Nevada appeal, but I don't know anybody that's ever won an Olympic medal, so this is pretty exciting. She was one of my daughter's old gymnastics coaches as she was transitioning to diving. So I just wanted to say congratulations to Krista Palmer. And with that, did we cover NASB updates?
I guess the only update I would let you know that Renee will be getting a message. We did have a request today from one of the counties to extend the deadline for acceptance of the NASB nominations. We didn't see a reason to not grant that extension, given that most districts are dealing with the back-to-school, just all the busyness at that time. So that will be something that's coming out. It's going to be like, I think until five days later. But we're in a good position, but just letting you know that there is an extension there. It'll be given to all districts.
Thank you. Item six, association reports. Do we have any in person or remote?
None remote, Mr. Cassiopoul?
Okay. Seeing none, we're going to move on to item seven. This is an informational update from Carson City Health and Human Services on conditions related to COVID-19 in the Carson City area and the Quad Counties. This is for discussion only. And we have Dustin, Dustin Booth and Nikki. Are you both coming up?
Good evening, members of the board. For the record, my name is Dustin Booth. I am the Disease Prevention and Control Manager at Carson City Health and Human Services. I'm also an epidemiologist. Tonight, I wanted to talk to you briefly about Quad County and Carson City data. So this chart here represents a snapshot of the Quad County's seven-day moving average throughout the pandemic, starting last March, all the way through the beginning of August. This second chart takes a closer look over the last several months, starting with the decline in January and a fairly flat curve till the beginning of July. Then we see the increases case, the seven-day moving average in the Quad County. Here is a, this chart shows the Carson City-specific seven-day rolling average for July. At the beginning of July, Carson City was at less than 10. By the last week of July, Carson City reported a rolling average of 23 cases. This chart shows the number of actual cases per MMWR week. So starting at the beginning of July, we had five cases. By the end of July, Week 30, we had 57 cases. For the month of July, 68% of the cases were reported in the last two weeks. This chart shows the age breakdown for Carson City for the month of July. 22% of the reported cases were aged 0 to 19. 53% of the reported cases were aged 20 to 49. 19 other percent of the reported cases were aged 50 to 59, and 6% of the reported cases were 70 or older. Among the cases in July with completed information, the most common known COVID-19 exposures were in the community at 41% or that, and then the household at 22%. This chart shows the breakdown based on the state dashboard of the percent of population that is vaccinated in each county. For Carson City, we're at 51.93%, Douglas County at 45.93%, Lyon County is at 38.64%, and Story County is at 15.07%. In the news, there's been a lot of reports about breakthrough cases. In the Quad County region since February, we've had 133 documented breakthrough cases, which is less than 4% of our total cases in the Quad County during that timeframe. We've had two individuals that were breakthrough cases that have been hospitalized. However, none of these individuals have passed away. Short and sweet, any questions?
Yeah, I'll start with the board. Any questions from any members of the board? Richard?
I wish we had that in front of us. I don't think we do. But how many cases are, for lack of a better term, under the 18 juvenile cases? And if we have some, how sick are they getting? If you know.
Yeah, so we break it out by tenure, age groups. So if I were to look, so the 0 to 19, so it's 22% of the cases. When we look it down from 0 to 9, it was 7% of our cases in July. And from 10 to 19, it was 15% of our cases in July. I do not know of any, anybody under the age of 19 in our region that has been hospitalized.
And Dustin, of the folks locally, I guess, that have COVID, I mean, there's mixed opinions, and there's a lot of data out there, and we're trying to just understand it for our community because a lot of folks have some strong opinions, and, you know, they have a right to have these strong opinions. But what are we seeing in terms of those in our community that have it? Are these otherwise healthy individuals? Did they have pre-existing conditions? Do we have a breakdown that talks us through some of that?
So, you know, so in sort of, I guess, in July, you know, 96% of our cases are, you know, individuals that are, you know, unvaccinated. The ages, you know, the majority of them are the, you know, 20 to 69 years old. And so they, you know, varies in regards to underlying conditions. I don't have those direct stats, but we do, if we're able to talk to individuals, we do collect that information to, you know, assess what their, you know, underlying conditions are because that helps give guidance in regards to, you know, isolation after you're positive. Currently, if you basically don't have any underlying conditions, it's, you know, it's a 10-day isolation. If you do have underlying conditions, and the more underlying conditions you have, then it would usually look at a 20-day isolation because those individuals can't clear the virus as easy. And so they could be infectious up to 20 days.
Okay. Feel free to ask any other questions, but I'm just, I mean, it's interesting to me because I truly, you know, I know what I read. This Delta variant that everybody's talking about now, from, I don't know if it's a fair question to you guys, but is it, is it more dangerous than the other one we had? I mean, I'm kind of curious. Our cases aren't overflowing, yet a lot of attention's being made to this. And, you know, we're subject to, say, the governor's directives and whatnot. So I'm just trying to get a sense of, a comparison between what we had and where we're at now.
Yeah, so in regards to variants of concern, the Delta variant would be one of them. When somebody tests for COVID, they, that, not in all cases, but in, if you test through our office, and then there's a sample through private labs that get sequenced for variants, or what variant made you sick. So based on the statewide sequence analysis that's done, it's not that we're seeing, you know, over 80% of our cases have been sequenced for the Delta variant. So it is, it has taken off. It is most likely the variant that's circulating. It is, you know, this variant has mutated to be more infectious, so it produces more viral particles so that then when somebody's sick, they can spread it to more people. So that initially was around what they call an R naught of two. So each person makes two people sick. Now it's predicted that it's an R naught of nine. So now one person can make nine people sick, in theory. So that's sort of that more infectiousness. And so we've seen that with, you know, in the, as the Delta variant moved in and people returned to, you know, summertime activities of doing, doing things and, you know, that they didn't do last year because we're open now that there are, you know, more opportunities for engagement, you know, with somebody that could, you know, make you ill. I think another thing too is with our, the, you know, it's hot out, so people stay inside. Plus, our weather, our smoky weather has not been very favorable for outdoor activities, so a lot of people stay inside. So that, you know, this, you know, like any other respiratory virus, it spreads, spreads inside.
Okay. Do you have something? Go ahead.
With Health and Human Services, I think quit testing, is that correct?
So we had stopped testing at our facility due to the demand. However, the demand has increased. And so we are, we currently offer testing at our, at the Health Department three days a week. And then we've also, for, during our vaccination events, we schedule testing either before a vaccination event or after a vaccination event to utilize the resources that we have. We partner with the Guard to help us with vaccination, then they also help us with the testing.
And I'm just curious, if somebody tests at a private doctor's office, do those results come to you guys so you can track it?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
What are, what are the trends you're seeing, say, in Washoe County? Because, you know, we're such, we're so close. We all go into Washoe County several times a week sometimes.
Yeah. I mean, Washoe, I think that, you know, they, I think they reported that they, that their, you know, their rolling average has increased, just like our Quad County region has. Ours is nowhere near where theirs is. And, you know, we communicate with the Health Department there in regards to cases, what we call out-of-jurisdiction cases. So they transfer them over to us, and we transfer it to them. And, you know, staff haven't really provided me update besides just that normal activity of any, like, concerns about Washoe. I just know that their, that their numbers have been increasing, just like our Quad County region has.
And one of the other worries I have is, last year, there was a, there was a slow response, it felt like, in our schools for contact tracing. And so I'm just wondering, are there, have we kind of really clarified those lines of communication with our schools in case there is an outbreak in one of our schools?
Yeah, so, so last year, when we go back to the beginning of school, we were, you know, the Health Department, we did it. We worked with each school district to, and they're our key contact in each school district. By second semester, we worked with those key contacts to put it at the school level because it was, there was a delay. And so we looked at it, you know, it's more, it, the school nurses or, you know, whoever the schools are designating to know where those kids are, they know it. It shouldn't be left to us to get a classroom, you know, seating chart and try to figure that out, where that is. So we did that, and it worked really well here at Carson City. Sheila and her staff were really great, and we look forward to that with this next school year, working with Sheila and her staff.
I've heard a lot about this Delta variant. And what I've read and researched and everything, it seems like that people who get it are not getting as sick as the first version. Is that correct? And what are we seeing in the younger population? Are they getting very sick, or is it like mild cold, or do you have any idea?
I, my staff didn't provide me any, any update in regards to the, to the kids. You know, they do know that they, you know, obviously, it's, you know, this is a novel virus. Most of us do not have any protection to it. So when, when we get it, we get ill. And, you know, the, it all depends on that individual, the severity of their illness. But at least for the month of July, I, staff hadn't shared with me any children that had been hospitalized, at least especially for Carson. That, but it doesn't, I, but they haven't really, they shared with me any differences that they've seen with kids versus adults.
I just have a clarifying question on your side slide, if you can go back to it, where it showed Carson City cases, just to make sure that I'm understanding it. Because at first... at first, I'm not sure where you're, this one. Just to make sure, this, the 26, because you said five, and you did that, the 26 is the day of July, not, no, what does the 26 mean?
So for, for, we report on what's called MMWR Week, Morbidity Mortality Weekly Report.
Okay.
And so each week of the year is assigned a week.
Oh, okay.
So week 26 was the beginning of July.
Okay.
Week 27 through week 30.
Okay, thank you.
Depending on the year, there's...
I was trying to figure out, is that July 26? What is that? So that makes, thank you for that clarification.
Yeah, so there's usually, with MMWR Weeks, there's usually 52, but some years we do have 53 weeks.
Okay. That is definitely an upward trend.
If you, I know you're not showing a slide on it. November, December, obviously, was our big months. What were the cases in, in that area? I was just, compared to the numbers now?
So, so if you go back to this, the top chart here, that, that's showing our, the surge that we had during the winter months. And, you know, last year in July, the state saw an upward tick. We didn't hear locally, but the state did see that after 4th of July. But our biggest surge was during the, the winter months, which we see respiratory illnesses at that time.
Okay. So you're looking at close to 300 during that time?
Yeah, the rolling average, the seven-day rolling average. It's a better way to, to look at that because it, because of the delays in lab reporting, that some days there may be low labs and then the next day there's a whole bunch of labs. So by, by looking at that seven-day moving average, it's a better way to look at, look at case counts.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay. Nikki, do you have anything to add?
Good evening, Nikki, Director, Carson City Health and Human Services. Just to add on to that also, we have changed our staffing, so we're now working five days a week instead of seven. So on Mondays, you may see a very large number, but that does not mean that, that, you know, that Monday is especially worse than other days. It, it means we're catching up. And so I just wanted to put that into perspective for all of you.
Okay, Richard?
When this first broke out, this COVID, there was a lot of false positive testing going on, or tests that was occurring. Has that improved the testing? Has improved where you get less false negatives? Does that make sense? I'm sorry, false positives. That was my mistake.
Yeah, so, so right now, there's two types of tests that, that individuals can take. An antigen-based test, which is similar to what, if you went during, to see your physician in regards to an office test for flu, they shove it, swab up your nose, it looks for flu antigens when you're, when you're ill. Same thing with COVID, it looks for COVID antigens. And then, then there's the PCR test. So the PCR test, the, the lab that we use, which is the State Public Health Lab, they do use a multiplex test that looks for flu A, flu B, and, and SARS-CoV-2. And that, that really hasn't changed over the time, but by, besides adding the influenza component to that, it hasn't really changed. So, you know, the FDA approves the, the tests for each, each company that does that. And so on the PCR, they look for, you know, what they call the CT value. So it has to be 40 CTs or less to be considered a positive. If it's above 40, it should not be considered, it should be considered a negative. And then the antigen is, is just a, a line on a card that, that it looks for that.
Thanks.
So I would just add that the PCR is like your gold standard, and those are the tests that we run through our testing events and at the Health Department.
All right. I think that's all we could come up with. Thanks for your time. I'm sure you get a lot of questions, but is there a way, if anybody wants to contact you, how do we get in touch with you for questions or whatnot?
Yeah, so if anybody would like to, to reach out, you know, they can call the Health Department at, at 775-887-2190. And during business hours, we usually have somebody, always have somebody at the front desk to answer that, and they can transfer you up to me.
And then in addition, we still have our hotline available, and that is 434-1999.
1988, isn't it?
No, I think it's 1988. Okay, stand corrected. So anyway, general questions can go to that hotline. Those individuals have been trained to answer questions, and that is also how somebody can get tested at our facility. And then on our website, it does have all of our events. So anybody can get on the website and find out where our events are. We do serve four counties, so we do rotate between counties. But any Carson City residents can go to a testing or vaccination event at any of the other counties.
All right. Thank you very much. We're, because it's discussion only, we're, we're not taking public comment? We're going to have public comment next. Thanks. Yeah.
I just want to thank the Carson City Health and Human Services for all of your efforts over the last year and all of the information that you have provided to the community and the testing and vaccination events that you have, have put on. I, it's, I know you said you were working seven days a week, and I want you to know that your efforts are appreciated.
And we really appreciate the collaboration that we've had with the schools and just the open dialogue and to be able to figure things out.
Thank you. So we're going to move on now to item eight, which is public comment. And again, I think most of us have been here enough now. We just asked that public comments be kept to three minutes, not to exceed three minutes and not just to repeat the person in front of you. This is for items that are within the jurisdiction of this board that are not already marked for action because we will be taking public comment on action items. So with that, if you want to make public comment, just come on in, state your name, or excuse me, come on up to the microphone, state your name. And I do have a list of folks that signed in, so I'm going to go with them first. But if you didn't sign in, you're still welcome to come up and make public comment. So we'll start out with Karen Stevens.
Mr. Stokes, members of the board. In reading through the school reopening plan, I was inspired to write a piece that I call Imagine. Imagine a virus so deadly that it has to, has never been isolated and that you have to be tested to know that you have it. Imagine a virus so contagious that you are told you should wear no mask, one mask, two masks, three masks, N95 masks, masks between sips, on the bus, on the train, on the airplane, in the gym, around your grandchildren, around your, around your grandmother, anyone for that matter. Imagine a diagnostic test that is so precise that it can't tell the difference between a cold virus or a virus particle, or a cold particle or a virus particle. Imagine an experimental emergency use vaccine injection for a virus so deadly that you are threatened, coerced, shamed, bribed, given free donuts, free hamburgers, fear-mongered, and forced to take it to keep your job. Imagine a childhood that is filled with fear, anxiety, and trauma from a virus that a child has a statistically zero chance of dying from. Imagine that a childhood of stressed, of perceived threats, reduction of breath flow, creates a positivity of autoimmune conditions, lupus, asthma, allergies, and chemical sensitivities, among other things, of course. Imagine a society that is unwilling to protect our precious children from governmental and medical tyranny. Imagine a world where the dictates of just a few become the mandates of the many, where your constitutional and God-given rights as human beings have been extinguished. Imagine no more. There is no reason. We have been moved into the new one-world order. Wake up! Before it's too late. Stop promoting useless mass chemical bioweapon injections and racist CRT curriculum.
Next, we have, sorry if I mess up your name, Bahar Jazani. Was I close?
Oh, it's Bahar, Bahar Jazani.
Thanks.
Yeah. Hello? Okay, cool. Hi, my name is Bahar Jazani, and, oh, I just graduated from Carson High School, and I support the district's decision to focus on equity 100%. For the people in this room that disagree, I want to talk about why implementing equity into our schools is not only beneficial but crucial. And I also want to take a minute and talk about why critical race theory is important. At first, my plan was to come up here and explain equity in a very moderate way and then kindly ask people to support it. But after some thought, I realized that that won't accomplish much. I believe everyone in this room is capable of understanding equity, and it's not a groundbreaking idea. For example, implementing equity into our schools can look like giving more resources and class time to visual learners who may not be as prioritized as auditory learners, or giving more class time and encouragement to female STEM students rather than solely focusing on their male peers. This is equity, and it's a simple concept. Everyone in this room is intelligent and capable enough to understand it, and I believe the only possible reason one would disagree with implementing equity into our schools is if they are comfortable with inequality. Equity makes the privileged uncomfortable, but it's the only way equality can be achieved. You can say you want equality in our schools all you want, but in order to create a truly inclusive environment where students of all genders, races, sexualities, and religions are equal, you must take steps to satisfy the disadvantaged groups. This means teaching critical race theory. And yes, critical race theory will make some students uncomfortable, but it is still crucial and must be taught. Understanding the intersections of racism and our criminal justice system and our government in general is just as necessary as understanding basic biology or math. It's crucial and it must be taught in order to achieve true equality. And equality means not promoting a colorblind system because saying that you want your schools to be colorblind is equivalent to saying that you don't want your kids to learn about the historic struggle of people of color within this nation. And Carson City School District, equality means not hiring ESL teachers that will tell parents of students of color to stop teaching their kids their native language because it confuses them. CCSD, this means not consistently and disproportionately putting students of color in lower-level classes. Equity means making change and making people uncomfortable in order to achieve equality. How can equality be accomplished if we remain comfortable in our position of inequality? The answer is it can't. Once again, I completely support the district's decision to focus on equity, and so should you. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's remember, everybody gets their three minutes, whether we agree with them or not. Let's not have any undertones, please. Thank you.
Is it working? Yeah. There we go. Members of the board, Ms. Stokes, appreciate the opportunity to say a couple of things. Ladies and gentlemen of the school board, I'm concerned about a youngster's lack of knowledge needed to, the knowledge is needed to secure their future. My son graduated high school just six years ago, believe it or not, and it's tragic how few folks his age know, even know what we celebrate on the 4th of July. Yet your superintendent has just hired a director of equity and curriculum and instruction. Folks, equity in a curriculum means critical race theory. I'm here to tell you that we don't want our kids brainwashed with racism, and that's exactly what critical race theory is, racism. I suggest you reject that garbage and instead implement a new Hillsdale College curriculum that they just came out with. It covers K through 12, and it's available, I believe it's free, and it's rather in-depth. The equity director that you hired, Mrs. Mainzey, could be reassigned to implement that. Hillsdale College's new curriculum seeks to immerse students in American history and the American political tradition. It includes lesson plans and primary source documents. K through eight addresses the American founding, the American Civil War, Declaration of Independence, and the United States Constitution. While high school units include the principles of America, equality in America, and progressivism and the state. Folks, you represent the citizens of Carson City. They demand solid civics education, and they reject the racist critical theory. And thank you for your attention.
Thank you, John. Next, we have Lee Elliott.
I speak from the podium because I have to. Y'all know what this is? I'll tell you what, the last board meeting I spoke of, there was four of the individuals up there that couldn't care less what anybody was saying. I was watching, I have, I've had the opportunity to study people for a very long time, living in Hollywood and on stage. And so I'm going to make mine very simple and clear. By the way, I have a couple of other books if you want to take them home and, and study them and read your constitutional rights. Okay? The Supreme Court New York Times versus Sullivan, ruling 1964. And see, there, when she was talking, your eyes were like riveted on her and glint, it was great. I loved it. The United States Supreme Court unanimously ruled in favor of the newspaper. The court said the right to publish all statements is protected under the First Amendment. The court also said in order to provide libel and public official must show that there was said against them was made with actual malice, that is, with knowledge that it was false or with recklessness discard for the truth. The court also asserted America's profound national commitment to the principle that debate on public issues should be uninhibited, robust, and wide open. Free and open debate about the conduct of public officials, the court reasoned, was more important than the occasional honest factual errors that might hurt or damage officials' reputations. Okay? You're all looking away. Couple of them are looking away.
They're looking.
Okay. I tell you what, it's going to explode. I talk to 1,000 people a day. I get calls from parents I don't even know, what are we going to do about the mask? What are we not going to do about the mask? What is real, what is not real? You better take notice, people. You guys are under our thumb now. You're on our dime. I hate to say it that way, but it's the truth. We love our kids. We, as adults, should be ashamed of ourselves. We're taking the smiles away from our children. And the three minutes that you have pegged as enough is enough is unconstitutional, but I'm not going to go for that tonight, okay? People should be able to speak freely, openly, like this young lady back here. I loved it what she did. It was her right, her constitutional right. It was her right, her constitutional right. We don't stand up now as adults, as a parent. I tell you what. Our kids are going to walk around going, "Wow, look at that. I can't beat it." My time's up.
Thanks, Lee. So next, we have Patricia Toon.
Hi. My name is Patricia Toon. I want to talk to you about September 17th, but as an RN, I just have to wonder if this really kills COVID? And if it does, which I doubt, how long it has to stay wet, just FYI? Because people use that and they wipe, and they think that it's not working. It has to stay wet, like for two to four minutes, just FYI. That was just pre-medical advice, I guess. So I'm here to talk about September 17th. It's fast approaching, and it's Constitution Day. Congress passed legislation requiring any federally-funded schools and federal agencies to hold educational programs and to teach the Constitution on that day. I was public schooled. My children were public school. My daughter was a public school teacher for several years, and none of us had ever heard of this. I just recently learned of it, so I'm kind of surprised. On August 5th, I sent an email to you regarding this day and asked about the plans to fulfill this, to fulfill this federal requirement. I haven't heard back from any of you, but I know it's less than a week already. Constitution is an American federal observance that commemorates the formation and signing of the United States Constitution by 39 brave men on September 17, 1787. They risked their lives, their families, and their fortunes for us. Our Constitution is the most influential document in American history, yet so many have never read it. And many that take the oath to protect, uphold, and preserve the Constitution have never even read it. Our Constitution serves as a basis for other similar documents around the world. While most constitutions last less than 20 years, ours has endured for centuries. I think that's incredible. I believe the difference in ours is because ours is founded on the creed that all men are created equal, not equity, equal, and that they are endowed by their Creator with certain unalienable rights. Among those, life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. Our Constitution recognizes these rights. Are God-given, by our Creator, not by the government. Our Constitution gives us no less than the owner's manual to the greatest form of government the world has ever known. We, the people, we are the government. If you doubt this, look around. How many people are flooding into our country? And how many are fleeing to get out? We can say what we want. We have a great country. And so it saddens me when our young people don't understand our history and how much freedom we have versus the other countries. Just look at our borders. They can't get in fast enough. We can't be that bad. So in 2016, President Obama stated, and I quote, "With pride in our diverse heritage and our common creed, we affirm our dedication to the values enshrined in our Constitution. We, the people, must forever breathe life into the words of this precious document and together ensure that its principles endure for generations to come," I end quote. Constitution Day is a day that federal, state, and local officials, as well as leaders of civic, social, and educational organizations, are encouraged to conduct ceremonies and programs that bring our community together, that reflect on the importance of active citizenship. And I think this is a great time to let Nevada shine. I look forward to seeing what you have planned for our schools.
Thank you, Patricia. Next, we have Bob Mathers and Shelley Van Sickle.
I'm going to set my timer again so I know I have six minutes.
Good. Thanks.
Awesome. Okay. So I wanted to bring my kids to the meeting tonight so they could share their own statements. But I also didn't want to play the mask game, so I'm going to go ahead and read them for them. And also, in response to the gal who spoke for critical race theory, I thought you guys said that Carson doesn't have critical race theory in their schools. She just said she's glad that you guys have it, and she's for that. So that means you have it in your schools.
No, that means somebody said we have it.
Okay, she just graduated, so she's a student, so I guess she knows what she's talking about. So this is my son, Connor Mathers. He's nine. His statement is, "I don't want to go to school with a mask on, and I don't see my friends' smiles. I can't think with a mask on because my face is too hot. They make me sad. They make me mad, and they make me frustrated. I don't want to go to the store with a mask on. Thank you for getting rid of them for the kids. Now get rid of them for the teachers." This is my four-year-old. I asked her what she wanted to say. She wrote down her own version, and I wrote what she said. She said, "I don't like wearing masks. They make me sad. I can't see smiles. I don't want masks. I don't want to wear masks on the plane. We're going to Florida, maybe, in October because I don't want to wear a mask either." But she said, "I don't want to wear masks on the plane. It's hot wearing masks." She's four. Both of my children do not like wearing masks. I was also talking to one of my cousins in Fallon. She has children in a private school. The reason we keep discussing masks is because you guys flip-flop more than flip-flop Fauci. No masks, yes masks, no masks, yes masks, no masks in school, but teachers have to wear masks. No masks on, you have to wear masks on the bus. Give me a break. Like, we're all over the place. Other counties didn't have masks. They had schools open just peachy keen. So I was discussing with her just yesterday. I said that I've been going to school board meetings for like three months. They're listening and not doing anything the parents are asking. And she mentioned that her kids say they really don't even mention COVID anymore, like it has just disappeared for them. And I'm glad for that. And she moved from Vegas. And she said, "I feel so grateful we got to Fallon when we did and got to the school we get to go to. It's all-day school, no masks, after-school programs like normal, kids being kids. I feel awful for the kids who feel helpless and hopeless. They're truly the innocent ones. Adults are ruining their lives." I just wanted to put in another plug for the Commonwealth that I'm participating in. I'm not putting my kids in public school until you guys figure this out. It's for LTINevada.org. It's a God-based, family-centered, agency-driven, leadership education. Until masks are completely out of the system, my kids are not going to school. You're saying there's no masks currently? There's going to be a second wave, and a third wave, and a fourth wave, and another variant, forever. COVID is not going anywhere. Masks should not be enforced. If people want to choose to wear them, that's up to them, but they shouldn't be forced. Teachers shouldn't be forced to be wearing masks right now either. What is that telling the kids? You guys don't have to wear masks, but I guess the parents and the teachers are really contagious, so they have to wear masks? None of this makes any sense. And wearing the masks on the bus, they're going to get the stuff all over their fingers, and they're going to go in the classroom, and it's going to get all over the place anyway. Wearing masks on the bus is not going to solve anything. All that teaches the kids is, "Well, COVID hangs out on the bus, but it doesn't hang out in the classroom." I also echo the sentiment that we need guidance counselors at every single school. You guys chose to wear masks, to implement masks. Like I said, Fallon, no masks. Multiple counties, no masks. You guys literally chose to muzzle our children and have them in masks because you're hiding behind Sicilac. When the county commissioner's office and the school board and the sheriff are on the same page, that's when changes can be made. Our school board and our county commissioner and our sheriff are on the same page as Sicilac. I don't agree with anything Sicilac is doing. We are 49th in education in the state. We are 49th in unemployment. The numbers just came out. He is totally destroying our state, and you guys are on board with following him to destroy our state. I don't want masks in the schools. I don't want them to be forced. I don't want vaccines to be forced. If people want to choose to get the vaccine, that's totally up to them. If they want to choose to wear the mask, that's totally up to them. But you guys cannot be forcing this. You can't be making people wear them if they don't want to wear them. And with the guidance counselors, the traveling social worker, that's baloney. Literally, every single school needs to have a guidance counselor. We have a lot of really messed-up kids, and teenagers, clearly, because teenagers are the ones who should be ready to overcome the world and do everything. And they're the ones who are wearing masks the majority of the time. This is something you guys chose. You decided to instill this fear in our kids. It needs to go away. It needs to go away. And I don't want it, I don't want my children to see this on a regular basis. And if money is the concern, you guys need to figure that out. Take some money away from Superintendent Stokes and the administrators and all the other employees who are getting way overpaid. Every single phone call I got home from Fremont was for a fundraiser. I lost count of how many fundraisers they had. Every single paper gets translated into Spanish. They have flyers and newsletters and papers. It's all translated into Spanish. That's money that can be saved. Stop.
Thank you.
Stop enabling the kids and teach them English.
Next, we have Deborah Gibbons.
This is Son. Board members. My name is Deborah Gibbons. I'm a longtime citizen here in Carson City. I do not have kids in school now, but my son did go through the schools here in Carson City. I wish I had paid closer attention to what was being taught to him. Being a business owner, I was very caught up in my own business. But now that I am retired, I plan on spending a lot of time on trying to make sure that our kids are educated with history, with real history. Bob Woodson has a wonderful project he's got going. I don't know if the critical race theory is being taught under the 1619 Project. They have different names for things. And I do have to say, it is very interesting to see when eyes look at you and when eyes do not look at you from board members. And it's as if, are you listening or are you not listening? This gentleman in particular has looked at the ceiling almost all evening long. And we're members here that have either kids or grandkids in the school district here. Excuse me. In the school district here. And to read the body language as far as what's coming from you elected members here, it is a little disheartening. That's all I have.
Thank you. Any additional public comment?
Yes. I'm Heather Coe, and I've been listening to several doctors. One is Dr. Cody Messner from Test Children's Hospital. And he made it very clear that all this COVID money, not one study on masks, none, and nothing for children who are not dying of this. And yes, this variant is like a cold. That's all it is. And I know that because several of my son's friends have got it and didn't know they had it. Second of all, I listened to a beautiful young girl talk about something that I know for a fact is already implemented in this school system because my son goes to school at Carson High School. And my daughter started with this. She is a straight A student until she got an English teacher that failed her because she didn't write a paper that was politically correct. And this is getting to the point of being ridiculous. She's proof, after listening to her, that you are teaching racism and you're allowing this. Okay? It's, the most racist thing in the world is equity. Equality is what we want. We want everyone to be treated equally. And I'm sorry, that's too much for anyone to ask of teachers not to make such an issue out of their own personal political views. And that is what's happening. I've experienced, my children have experienced it. And I want it out, and I want an option if you're going to teach garbage that will make children hate one another, divide one another, so that my kid doesn't have to listen to it. Maybe he could make up for the year he lost. That would be nice.
Bepsi Strasberg. I'll reserve most of my comments for item nine, but I just wanted to congratulate the school district and the superintendent for not enforcing masks after Governor Sicilac came out with his ridiculous directives. I, this morning, I got a call from a parent who said she was pulling her students out of the school district after looking at Directive 48. I mentioned to her what the Carson Now article said about masks, and she was slightly relieved. Her concerns then moved on to the testing protocols that are in Directive 48, but we have not heard how that is going to be implemented in the schools. We want to get more information of those protocols, and I would urge the school district to get the parental consent prior to any testing being done on schoolchildren.
Any additional in-person public comment? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to close in-person public comment. Do we have any remote public comment?
Yes, Mr. Cassiopoul, thank you. This comment is from a parent of a student at Carson High School. "I'm hoping, based on the governor reinstating the mask mandate, that Carson City School District will be implementing this as well. The governor is following the recommendation from the CDC. There has been a substantial uptick in cases as well as the new Delta variant, which is a major cause for concern. Students, teachers, and other school district staff deserve to be protected. Wearing a mask is not a difficult thing to do. It's much better than catching COVID and winding up sick on a ventilator or worse. Please listen to the CDC and our governor and require masks for all students, teachers, and other school district staff. My family is vaccinated, but we are more than willing to do our part and wear a mask to help curb this deadly pandemic. to help curb this deadly pandemic. Nobody likes to wear masks. We're all sick of it, but it's important that we look out for ourselves and one another. It simply wouldn't be fair for anyone to put the lives of others at risk. There are a lot of people in the schools every day, and it's impossible to socially distance. Therefore, it's more important than ever to wear a mask.
It is. It is. Yeah, we close public comment.
This request was provided to be put in the record for Heather Rittman. It's regarding under seven hard truths of critical race theory. There's two pages of comments here, Mr. President. It's far too much to read, but I will include it in the record for the minutes, and I can also provide a copy to the trustees so that you guys have that as well.
Okay, thank you.
This comment is from Asia Hensley. Thank you to the board for the opportunity to speak. They're submitting the public comment by email because they cannot risk the possibility of being in a room of unvaccinated, unmasked people, as I have underlying health conditions that would make fighting COVID very difficult, should she get it. She would like to express my extreme concern and disappointment regarding the consideration of not requiring students to wear masks while attending school this year, at the very least to start the year, since students have been traveling and active in other riskier situations through the summer. As a parent, she's worried for her son, as they currently are not eligible to receive a vaccine and will be sitting in full-capacity classrooms this year. Many students around them, if not all, will not be vaccinated. If masks are not required, no doubt, most of them will be without masks. Kids will do, not do, the responsible thing and wear a mask by choice. My sons will be wearing masks regardless. Why do, why would we not do everything possible to keep our kids and communities safe, especially when this Delta variant is more transmissible and showing up in kids more than ever? It doesn't make sense to not wear masks when our area's vulnerability is considered very high and our infection rates are at least as high as last school year, and we wore masks then. I invite every board member and Superintendent Stokes to visit the high school during lunchtime or even just between classes to see how safe you feel in that environment without your mask. I don't particularly like wearing a mask either, but science has proven they help stop the spread when worn properly. That's a whole other issue of itself. Honestly, I feel defeated at this point and don't know if this comment will make much of a difference, because others are yelling louder right now, but it's worth a shot. All I can hope is that the board will make their choice wisely, based on the facts and statistics provided by the various health agencies we have access to. Masks in groups like classrooms should be worn, at least until we have herd immunity and low transmission rates.
Thank you.
This comment is from Joyce Newman. Thank you for the opportunity to provide comments regarding the district's mask policy for students. I wish I could have been there in person, but I'm one of those people in a high-risk group, immunocompromised and over 70 years of age. And even though I've been vaccinated, I'm aware of the many breakthrough COVID cases among vaccinated people and have chosen to be cautious. I know these are difficult times, and the board is faced with tough decisions. On August 3, the district announced on its website that masks would be required. On August 6, it announced they would not be required. I wonder if parents are as confused as I am. The agenda on the August 10 meeting indicates that the school mask issue is set for discussion only at this meeting. I noticed that school is scheduled to begin on August 16, but that the next board meeting isn't until the 17th. It appears this board has already decided to not require masks in schools. Is that right? Where is the science supporting that decision? I suggest you call a special meeting to revisit the matter and seriously consider the CDC's recommendations. As you know, there's a lot of information out there, much of it compiled by the Centers for Disease Control, major research, and clinical hospitals like Yale University, the Cleveland Clinic, and Children's Hospital of Los Angeles, among many others, to support a decision to require masks for schoolchildren. First, I would like to respectfully suggest that there are several questions board members might want to ask themselves. How many children in the district live with grandparents? How many children, parents, grandparents are immunocompromised or live with people who are? How many Carson City schoolchildren over the age of 12 have been vaccinated? How many of the children's caregivers have been vaccinated? How many COVID cases and deaths are you willing for children and caregivers to suffer to avoid having children wear masks? How many of you have children or grandchildren in Carson City schools? Here are some of the many, many recommendations I was able to find in a very short time. CDC recommends universal indoor masking for all teachers, students, staffs, and visitors to schools regardless of vaccination status. Emphasis added: Kids and young people are a concern. A recent study from the United Kingdom showed that children and adults under 50 were 2.5 times more likely to become infected with Delta, says Dr. Yildirim, a Yale Medicine Pediatric Infectious Disease Specialist and Vaccinologist. According to the CDC, the Delta variant is more contagious. Does this make children under 12, who are not eligible for the vaccine, at greater risk for becoming infected? The Delta variant is estimated to be up to two times more contagious than the initial SARS-CoV-2 virus. There is concern that because we don't have a vaccine approved for children less than 12 years of age, that group is at more risk right now.
Three minutes. I don't know. Do we have more?
Yeah, we, yes. This comment is from Mr. Don Williams. Mr. Williams is extremely disappointed by your decision not to require pupils to wear masks in schools when Carson City and surrounding counties have high rates of COVID. Everyone should be required to wear masks indoors until rates go down significantly. I'm a taxpayer and active voter, 35-year resident of Carson City and 39-year resident of Northern Nevada, who retired as the direct, research director of the Nevada Legislature with considerable experience in education and health policy. Please correct your decision and protect the children and their families. This comment is from Julie Olverd. Our middle school and high school students are vaccinated, but our fourth-grade, nine-year-old son is not, excuse me, nine-year-old is not. She attends Fritsch Elementary. I'm writing to express our discomfort with allowing no masking, especially in light of the inability to social distance with the school at full capacity. COVID-19 infection rates are higher this year than last year, with a dangerous variant spreading rapidly. If parents do not want their children following the CDC mask guidelines, they should opt for online school. We science-minded folk who follow the rules should not suffer because of those who choose ignorance. I'm afraid for our family's safety. Please consider doing the bare minimum to protect our community, require masks in full-capacity classrooms. This comment is from Haley Woodward. Ms. Woodward is emailing in regards to the newly announced update that does not require students to wear face masks inside the classrooms of the schools within the district. As a fully vaccinated healthcare worker, here is why I think this is unacceptable. Hospitals are understaffed and the remaining staff is overworked. As the COVID numbers rise, once again in Northern Nevada, there's the need for more staff to care for these patients. All healthcare workers are burnt out, and the hospitals are struggling to provide safe nurse-to-patient ratios, meaning that more medical errors are bound to happen, and each patient will be given, will begin to get inadequate care. CDC guidelines, along with the Carson County guidelines, state that all persons, vaccinated or not, are required to wear face masks in all indoor facilities. Schools are, in fact, an indoor facility, so these guidelines should apply. The guidelines also state that there should be six feet in between each person. How do you plan on accomplishing this with 30 students and one teacher in a small enclosed classroom? The CDC, along with the Academy of Pediatrics, are advocates for wearing masks inside the classroom. The vaccination is now available for anyone over the age of 12, meaning that a large group of students do not qualify to receive the vaccine. Without the vaccine, any additional protection should be required to avoid the spread of this deadly virus. The coronavirus is a real thing, and we should leave it to the medical professionals, not the governor with no medical education, to set the guidelines to prevent the further spread of it. I hope you take what has been written in this email into consideration and make the right choice of requiring masks in the classroom. This comment is from Jennifer DeGanji. First of all, thank you for all your hard work the last two years to keep our children as safe as possible during the pandemic. I was reassured that, that an education system would base their decision on evidence-based science. I got to teach my children about doing hard things, masking, to keep us and others safe. I was shocked to learn this year that masks will not be, will not be mandated despite CDC guidance. The Delta variant typically infects five to eight people versus last year's virus that typically only infected two others. This is closer to what, to that of chickenpox. With Delta higher viral loads are making children sick in places where masking is not required. In some places, they are running out of pediatric beds. We have a small rural hospital here with only eight beds. There is only one pediatric ICU in Northern Nevada at Renown. I hope we never see them run out of ventilators or PICU nurses who are able to manage a ventilator on a child. All this to say, we were lucky last year as a community in regards to pediatric severe infections. However, basing decision-making on this, on last year's virus is faulty when you are dealing with a more contagious virus. Masking is not perfect, but it decreases viral load, so that even if you get sick, hopefully it will be, it will be less sick, and if there is universal masking, the statistics improve vastly. My kinder student last year thanked me over and over again for letting her go to school. I'm not sure how to tell her that it is actually more dangerous this year, but others will not be wearing masks to help keep her safe because it disrupts their comfort and rights, and the school district is not willing to follow science to keep her as safe as possible. Please don't make school a place of trauma. For many students, they're, this is their safe place. They should feel as safe as possible and be able to trust the adults to make the hard decisions. Let's allow kids to continue magical thinking and allow the adults to base their decisions on science to keep the children as safe as possible so they can learn. Please reconsider a universal masking mandate to keep our kids as safe as possible. This comment is from Alisa Cunia. I'm not sure how to say the last name. As parents of two children under the age of 12, we are very concerned about the recent decision the district made to allow unvaccinated students to attend school without masks. We have a few questions we would like the trustees to consider and respond to. What criteria is guiding your decision on the current masking policy at Carson City School District? Why is Carson City School District not following the recommendations from the CDC? Three, why is the Carson City School District not following the recommendations of the AAP? Four, in the 048 Directive, please explain how the mask policy for Carson City School District is not more permissive than state or local health directives? Five, has the district considered the confusion and potential bullying students will face because students will be masked or not masked? In addition, there will be added responsibilities teachers will have in managing conflict with students and parents. We all want to keep our children safe and in school. Keeping all students and staff in masks, at least until they can be vaccinated, is the most logical and successful way to do this. This comment is from Natalie Reinhold. As a previous student, I come to you with great concern that the children of the Carson City School District will have masks optional this year. With the recent spike in COVID-19 cases, the CDC has recently changed its guidance regarding this issue to recommend wearing masks indoors. I believe it is unfair for a child to show up to school and worry about sitting next to an unvaccinated individual who is not wearing a mask. This will cause unnecessary stress for some after all of the trauma they have gone through in their education the last year and a half. We cannot control if students and their families are being safe outside of the classroom regarding the worsening pandemic, but we can make the children feel safer when coming to school by requiring masks to be worn. I recommend starting the school year off wearing masks, and if things go well, we can remove the requirement. It is already hard enough being a child in school, let alone with some kids will be wearing masks and others will not. Those who are or are not will hear comments from the other side, making a conducive learning environment difficult and uncomfortable. Consistency is key. The children have been out of school long enough. Wearing a mask to keep them in school and to avoid another shutdown is worth ensuring an in-person education. Mr. Cassioppo, I have others that have come in via email.
Okay.
This comment is from Russell Fullerton. Mr. Fullerton is curious as to why the school district is choosing to be reactive versus proactive when it comes to protecting our children, not requiring masks for students inside school district buildings unless there is an outbreak. Why are you willing to put your children's lives at risk? I am doing everything in my power to protect my children, but it seems that the school district is not. Last year, we chose to have student, to have our student attend full-time distance learning, and it did not go well, having to attend summer school to make up credits. We have another child at home who has, who was to attend kindergarten this year, but we have decided to not have him attend due to being immunocompromised. I would ask the school district to reconsider this decision about students wearing masks. I know it's uncomfortable and annoying. I hate them too, but they save lives. So again, I ask, please reconsider this decision. This comment is from Ms. Rogue MacDuffie. With the rise in cases and the emerge of a third wave, I would like to urge that the school district mask mandate for students be reconsidered. While our pediatric case numbers are currently on the low end, we are really, are we really willing to wait for our numbers to spike before we react? Do we really want to risk exposure and overwhelming our health system by potentially risking a breakout in our schools among populations who are not eligible for vaccines at this time? Mr. Cassioppo, that's all I have.
Great, thank you, Renee. So we're going to close public comment remotely, so all public comment is closed. I do appreciate everybody's time. I get it, it's a challenging topic. But anyway, we're going to move on to item nine. Discussion on Possible Action on Courses Approved for Dual Credit in the Carson City School District in accordance with NRS 389.160 to include approval of a Memorandum of Understanding, MOU, with National Education Equity Lab. This is for possible action, and we have Tasha Fuzon presenting.
Thank you, President Cassioppo, members of the board. NRS 389.160 allows high school students who have completed courses offered by a Nevada Community College or university to receive dual credit towards their high school diplomas. We currently, as a district, have MOUs with Western Nevada and the University of Nevada-Reno, and articulated programming with those two NSH schools to offer dual credit for our students. With the passage of Senate Bill 160 during the 81st session, dual-credit courses have been expanded to include courses from institutes of higher education outside of the state of Nevada or outside of NSH. So we are seeking approval to enter into a Memorandum of Understanding with the National Education Equity Lab to add an offering entitled Poetry in America: The City from Whitman to Hip-Hot at Pioneer High School for the upcoming year. Students who choose to take this course will receive three college credits from the Arizona State University and an Arizona State University transcript upon successful completion of the course. The course will fulfill an English, high school English requirement for graduation. Once approved by this board, I then have to submit our request to the State Board of Education for final approval. That submission will go on the State Board of Education agenda on the September 30th board meeting. So I am, at this point in time, in your packet. What you have included is a copy of our existing master course list of all the dual-credit courses that are available to students in our district. Typically, students who access these courses or take these courses are in our Jump Start program at the high school. As you know, our current Jump Start program allows students to enter into the program their freshman year, take courses at the high school. This coming year, we've added a second year for those freshmen that will take courses in the sophomore year. But, but our original program really started with, seniors have an opportunity to take the first year of college courses. They typically take English 101, English 102, Math 126, Math 127, et cetera. And then we expanded that to juniors starting that first year, so that then when they complete the two years, they have their associate's degree before graduation. That's why this entire, pretty much the entire catalog, almost, of WNC is listed. It's because with our current program, our students take in their junior year, excuse me, for that cohort group of students that are looking to earn their associate's degree before graduation, they take the required courses that they need to fulfill the high school graduation requirements, and then they're pretty much given open access to the WNC catalog to customize the courses that they take to align with their four-year college degrees. So we strongly recommend to them, again, students that they, they research what it is that they want to get their four-year degree in, and they take the courses that align to, and be able to be transferable up to UNR, so that they're not taking courses that won't necessarily help fulfill those four-year requirements. In addition to that, WNC works really closely with the students to make sure that they're actually all in alignment with those associate's degrees. So that is really the reason why we have such a vast offering for our students. And again, these are all currently through WNC. What we, what we actually offered through UNR was our EDU 110 class originally, so that's the introduction to education. This particular MOU will allow us to add the additional list of courses that you have in that MOU. But the only thing we're asking out of that list on the MOU is specifically to add the Walt Whitman, so it's an English 194 class. Although the Equity Lab offers the myriad different options on that list, on the MOU, we are not adding that for our we are not adding that for our state. So just so you know, the process at the state level is that individual districts have to go to their school boards, get approval to add a specific course. It goes into our course list, right, and then our students can access it. They are looking to streamline this process at the state level to where eventually the state will approve all the courses instead of having 17 districts have to do individual approvals that then go to the state board. So we're hoping to see that happen soon, as in this year, but currently, we're still on our own, our old plan. And that, again, requires us to individually adopt course by course. So again, that's important, even though the Equity Lab offers, I think there's, you know, eight different courses on that MOU, we are only looking to add the first. And so on page 39 of the master course or the dual credit list that you have, you'll see it highlighted that it's literally specifically that one course. So it's, and by the way, I do apologize for the fact that it has six question marks. I didn't know what the actual number of the course was. So if you want to write that in, is ENG 194. So in our actual application to the state, it will say ENG 194. And again, the title is Poetry in America: The City from Whitman to Hip-Hop. So that is my request of the board.
Mr. President, I'll make a move that the Carson City School District board, please. Go ahead, go ahead.
Just a clarifying question, Tasha. With the memorandum of understanding, we are only asking for the first one under AA, page one, but the other ones, why would they then be included in that memorandum of understanding? Is that in case the state approves them, another district submits those for approval, then would...
I would still have to bring it in front of you because of our own board policy that requires you all to approve individual courses in this particular setting. It is a standard MOU that they offer, so they'll offer them to us. I can have them, I can ask them to remove them, but they included that because they wanted us to know in future purposes, should we want to add any of their courses, we don't have to re-sign an MOU with them. I would then bring it in front of you as the board to say, we now want to offer AG. Do you approve for us to offer AG, you know, Essentials of Personal Finance? And then we would add that to our master course list. So the important piece for our community and for our school district is, in reality, this master course list that's included here. These are the courses that have been approved by the board previously, and then therefore subsequently approved by the state board, and what we are allowed to offer dual credit offerings. I am very excited, I just want you to know that the new bill was passed into law and will be added to NRS because we've had several occasions throughout the years that I've been with our district where families have requested us to reconsider different dual credit options outside of our NSH system. For instance, and I can't remember exactly what language it was, but a few years back, we had a family that had, you know, that the student had learned, this is not accurate, but something like Dutch. I mean, it was a language that you'd heard of, but wasn't, you know, something that is taught through many places. And they had found a course that was offered through Duke University, and remember that, right? And the student wanted to take this course and had been approved to take this course, but we could not allow them to have dual credit for it, even though it was from, you know, a prestigious college and was very, you know, a high-level course, a course of rigor for the student, but because it was outside of NSH, we couldn't allow that. So this particular bill that was signed into law will now allow us to explore some opportunities for students outside of NSH. The one caveat to that is that the course cannot be offered at the NSH institution. So the reason for the 194 is specifically because why would we want to offer an English 101 or a 102 class from Arizona State University when our NSH schools have that course and we already have the ability to offer it and our students to take it through our state colleges? So that is the piece to this, is that the course can only be utilized from an outside college if it doesn't exist within the NSH system. So it's another piece.
Rich, you've got a bunch of notes there.
Yeah, I have a few questions. I guess my first question would be is, why this course? Why was this selected from the Equity Lab?
I cannot answer that question from the Equity Lab. I can tell you why they picked that course, I can't answer that, but what I can say is what the purpose of the National Equity Lab is, that they are working with all of these, you can see these colleges, the level of, you know, Cornell University, Howard University, Bernard College, University of Pennsylvania, Georgetown, University of California Davis, et cetera. They were working with universities across the country to be able to bring dual credit course offerings to students all throughout the country. Not all states and not all districts have the advantage that we have of having a robust early college studies dual credit program for students. We're very fortunate that way, and we're extremely fortunate that we have such a good partnership with WNC, but not all districts and not all schools, especially rural schools, have access to that. So these are all online courses, right, or there's an online component, and then they hire, so it's actually going to be offered by our teacher at Pioneer High School, who will be the teacher of record, who will teach it utilizing that curriculum. And so it makes it more accessible to students all throughout the country. So that is their mission. And then also to give students a taste of what it is to take a course from Harvard or Yale where they might not have access to or think about, ooh, could I be competitive at that college? And then therefore maybe apply to those colleges that they wouldn't necessarily think about outside of their state. So it gives them an opportunity to see if they can be competitive in a different situation, a different dual credit situation. So I know that that is their purpose and what they were striving to do. Why they picked that specific course, I'm not sure. I know why our staff picked that course, it was purely because the teacher that we have that's going to teach it was really intrigued by the course title. So, and went, oh, I would love to talk about Whitman and hip-hop, right? That sounds like something our kids would really like and connect to. So that's why that individual course was selected, not for any other reason than we had staff that was interested in teaching it, and it was felt that the students would connect to it. It is an optional course, students are not required to take it, it is simply available to them should they choose to take that early college studies.
Thank you, I have a couple more. I guess I'm uncomfortable. Have you reviewed the curriculum, or has it been peer-reviewed by other teachers besides the one teacher who wanted to teach it?
So it has been reviewed and approved at the state level in terms of the Department of Education. For our state is actually the entity that brought the opportunity to counties in the state. We have seen the curriculum in terms of the course syllabus and the materials that students will be learning. We have done a crosswalk with state standards to make sure it's aligned to our state standards so our students can earn that high school English credit.
Have more, sorry. I guess I'm a little uncomfortable going out of state and sending Nevada public money out of state to Arizona. Is there any place in Nevada that this course could be taught from another college here in Nevada or a university?
No, and that's the only reason we can get it approved and that we can offer it. If it was offered by an NSH school, an NSH college, then we wouldn't be able to offer it. That's the way the legislation is written.
Would it be possible for the board, I don't know if the board maybe not want to, but to review the curriculum before we approve the MOU?
You are welcome to take a look at the documents that we have, yes, and I'm happy to share them with you. But I would also want to point out that in the 84 pages, no, 84, excuse me, 39 pages of courses that we have, the board has not individually reviewed the curriculum for all of those courses.
Yeah, I understand that.
Happy to show it to you, I mean, it's not a problem, it's not of a, it's nothing that is a secret, it's just, it is a college course, and our students have access to numerous college courses. And I guess it would be up to the student and the family to make the choice whether or not they wanted to take it. It's not a required course for students.
So, Tasha, I guess just to get right to at the elephant in the room, right? People here are saying, if you use the word equity, equity apparently equals critical race theory, and we've heard all this stuff, and you know, I have to admit my own ignorance. I've been looking this stuff up as fast as I can, reading as much as I can, and going through Tylenol like it's going out of style. There's just a lot to absorb, a lot to understand, and I'm trying to be as responsible as I can as a trustee. And so I've only had a couple of days to look at this, and it's just a title. And I guess what jumps out at me is with a group, given these times right now, you know, with a group, the National Education Equity Lab, they're obviously interested in equity. That's where I, I'm just a little, I'm a little nervous to jump in too quick because once, you know, once we adopt something like this, people are going to say, there you go, now you're teaching CRT. And I can go to sleep and I'm fine with what people think, you know, people can think what they want, but I just want to make sure that this course, like all other courses, the main reason for it is to give our kids options, to educate our students, give them opportunities, but not create a situation or a teaching that causes them to align with somebody else's train of thought. I guess what I'm trying to not say, but I need to just say it, is I want to make sure they're not trying to teach critical race theory until, I'm not saying it's good or bad, because I don't know enough about it, until we understand as a district if that's something we would even adopt. And I'm not even sure, I'm just rambling, but I mean, that's kind of, I know what people are wondering and what they're asking, and that's what I thought when I first saw this, was, you know, we offer like 30 English courses on this list already, and I'm approximating, it might be 25, but why 31?
It is because our staff and our school requested to have that as an option for their students. It's curriculum that intrigued the instructor, it's curriculum that intrigued what they thought would appeal to students. It's not a required course. Again, students and their families have the opportunity to choose whether or not they take this course or not. It simply provides greater access to early college classes for students. I don't think that we can, I don't think that it is our place to determine what is taught in the college-level courses. If it was a required course for our students to take for high school graduation, then I would be very concerned, and I could understand your concern there. It is offering another option to the very long list of early college study courses to students, simply saying they now have access to another course to take, should they choose to do so for college credit. Again, I would say out of those 39 pages, I don't know, and I cannot guarantee that of every course that's taught at WNC doesn't have portions of what our community would determine or label as critical race theory. That is not the basis of this course. This course is about poetry from Walt Whitman and about hip-hop. I mean, it goes up to hip-hop. But again, I'm happy to show anyone who's interested in the course syllabus, it's not something that we're trying to not be transparent with, but it's not even a history course, it's a poetry course. So I guess that's my perspective, is simply we want to have opportunities for students. Again, parents and students themselves can choose if this is an option that they want, it's not a required component. But, I mean, it's absolutely your choice of whether or not you want to give us direction or give me direction, permission to enter into the MOU. If you would like to have more time to look over materials, et cetera, that is completely, I mean, it's 100% okay, it's your choice, I'm happy to provide you with what we have.
Sure, no, thank you.
Question to follow up, kind of on his, I'm guessing that some concern may arise from the fact that this is a memorandum of understanding with the National Education Equity Lab. Could you please explain what that is? I haven't, I, what is the National Education Equity Lab? Is it an organization? I know just because everyone thinks equity, not everyone, but there is a significant population that thinks equity is a code word for CRT, and if you can explain it, that would be helpful.
So the National Equity, National Education Equity Lab is a consortium, I don't know really quite the correct word for it, but it's an organization that has worked with all of these colleges, again, to get them to come up with courses that can be offered to students throughout the country for a very low price. It is $250 for a student to take a course. Obviously, even at Western Nevada Community College or Western Nevada College, the course to take a course, the three credit courses is about twice that amount by the time you add the student fees, et cetera, you know, and at UNR, even more expensive than that. So this is a very low-cost option to students, to give them an opportunity to have access to, again, a course in a college that isn't necessarily in their hometown. I don't know of any research, materials, political agenda, anything that has come to light or been, you know, something that I found to be of concern about the National Education Equity Lab. As you know, we use the word equity a lot in education. I understand that our community in the room and some of them at home might not like the word, but in the world of education, it's used often simply to provide access to students to programming, right? So the intent of the National Equity Lab and working with these colleges was just that, to provide an opportunity for students to have access to college-level courses. I don't think there was anything more behind that offering.
Because I am aware that there are several counties in the state of Nevada that do not offer any AP classes or any dual credit opportunities, so I can see why the state would, and the State Department of Education would be saying that this is equitable and fair to students in those school districts, and that they would then have the opportunity to take college-level dual-credit classes. So to me, I don't think, and I'm guessing there's probably some concern, you know, I think the concern with critical race theory that people have and the awareness that there are racial issues discussed in a school, you talk about Martin Luther King Day as early as kindergarten, and every time that something is racially discussed, it does not mean that it is, that there's a critical race theory going on. And maybe there are some people with concerns about that, but to me, when I look at this and I see this as an Equity Lab, that equity, just like AJ uses vertical equity in our funding and horizontal equity in our funding, this is the type of, whatever the organization is, it is making that opportunity for dual-credit classes to be available to students irrespective of where they may live and what their local high school may have the opportunity to provide. So I don't know, maybe, am I overstepping, Tasha, by explaining that?
Not all, thank you, Trustee Crossman. That is what I have read, that is what I am understanding of the intent, their purpose, their mission, their outreach.
Well, and the question I would have is, when you look at college-level courses, they are, you know, post-K-12, they are adults, there are a number of topics which could be controversial in all social studies, English classes, and so just because this consortium is named Equity, why is this the one, and why aren't we asking to see syllabuses of every single one of these college courses, which we have no idea about? So, you know, this is, we are a school district, we're required to provide equitable services and education to all students. That's the law. That's what, we took an oath to... education to all students. That's the law. That's what we took an oath to do when we took this. And so, we can't cancel words because somebody is associating them with a meaning that's different than what we're using it for. And so, I just question why this is the one we want to pull out. If we have students who are interested in English courses and hip-hop, and this is going to get that high school senior directed towards a college or a career, let's spark that interest. That's, that's what we have these courses for. So, that's my thought.
Richard, we took your time over, so please, continue.
I guess the district will be paying the $250, is that correct?
That's correct. So we have set aside dual-credit funds. So for any of our students who are involved in the Jump Start program, we are paying their course fees. Currently, our, our foundation, thank you, our foundation has collected the money and is paying for resource materials. In this particular case, the fee for the course includes the materials.
And I happened to kind of do the research on this the best I could before I came to the board meeting. And actually, it's a nonprofit organization that historically serves under, underserved, yeah, underserved students or population. I also watched several videos, and it doesn't seem like a bad course, but I don't know the underlying things behind it, you know, if it teaches something that our community has expressed they don't want taught. And that's why I was asking to maybe see the curriculum before we made a decision, just to make sure that we're not approving something that our community does not want to be taught.
I appreciate that, and I would simply same response, again, happy to share that with you. But again, it's an option for a student to take the course. The family and the student would have to opt-in to take the course. They would have access to the course syllabus. It, it is not a captive audience that we place into this course and say, here's what we're going to teach you. But happy to, to share the syllabus with you.
Don, did you have any thoughts? Sorry, I, if I, I missed you if you did.
I'm good with it. I mean, it's just, I, I think I agree with you. It's a choice. It's a choice. We're not forcing anybody to take this class. It's nice to have choices.
I was just going to point out, too, that, and she has a women in literature English class that they offer, which some people might be opposed to that. So, I-
Tasha, how, sorry, for a 194 course, now that we're doing, we've kind of revamped our Jump Start system a little bit, where, you know, we kind of, you could start sooner. What level of English is this? I mean, would a, would a sophomore be taking this, a junior? And you might have said this, and I apologize.
No, I didn't. Thank you. That's an excellent question. Currently, Pioneer High School's plan is to allow enrollment for juniors and seniors.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Unless you have any more questions from the board? I heard a motion when we started this a day and a half ago.
I move that the Carson City School District Board of Trustees approve the list of courses from Western Nevada College, University of Nevada Reno, Trekkie Meadows Community College, Sierra Nevada College, and the National Education Equity Lab as dual-credit courses for the Carson City School District to include approval of a memorandum of understanding with National Education Equity Lab.
We have a motion in a second. Any further board discussion? Any public comment? I saw three hands go up, so we'll take them, whoops, one at a time.
Pepsi Strasberg is for the approval of a course called Poetry in America: The City from Whitman to Hip-Hop. I'd like to know, what is the driving force behind this poetry course? Who requested the course? It's certainly not the students. Who has taken this course? Who can give us direct feedback? I was troubled when I took the video course over the weekend from the Harvard University. Unlike what I heard earlier, it is a history course, poetry interpreted by intellectuals with the context of history. In this case, it was for San Francisco and the Chinese community. I urge you to get a taste of the course before your approval. The Nevada School Board meeting is on September 30th, and so there is no hurry to decide tonight. There are 11 other courses listed in the memorandum, none appropriate for students in K-12. College credits are wonderful. They are great to, for their schoolchildren, but they can learn advanced science, mathematics, engineering, to be career-ready and compete in the world stage. I looked up National Education Equity Lab. The CEO, Leslie Cornfield, states, "It became clear to me that the greatest civil rights issue of our generation is education and education equity. I do not want activism in the school curriculum. As I said before many times in this school board meetings, equity is critical race theory." When was the school board and parents told about this group, National Education Equity Lab? What vetting has been done? I have not heard in the discussion before this that any vetting was done. The memorandum says that the Education Equity Lab will manage the recruitment of students, will coordinate the delivery of college courses, provide student, study halls, and community-building sessions, provide updates on students' progress to the teacher who can better support the students. When did community building become part of K-12 education? When did the school district delegate the teaching responsibilities to third parties? When did parents agree to have third parties teach their children? I urge the school board to reject the memorandum and the addition of any poetry courses. Focus on the basics so we can raise the national ranking from the 49th level. Focus on STEM classes to compete with China. Students do not need to be indoctrinated in K-12 schools.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Richard Nagel. I just, this to me, I, I think you need to really go back and do your homework on this. Go to their website, look it through thoroughly and see what's going on. Thoroughly vet this. This is our, our children we're playing with. You know, this is not, this is like gasoline. We got to take care of it, make sure it's done properly and done right. I appreciate Mr. Cassiopa and Mr. Varner's and Ms. Crossman's attention to the detail of like, this is really fast. And I, we had a great sales job today. I thought it was one of the best sales pitches I've heard in a while. But then again, don't buy a pig in a poke, you know, know what you're buying, okay? Because this is a long-term arrangement you're going for. And, and when you go into a long-term arrangement, you should thoroughly understand that the rules of the contract that you're getting into and what you're actually buying. And can we get something cheaper, better, local with an agreement with UNR? You know, this seems like it's only good in Arizona. Why would we want to use it here? Our kids are going to go to UNR. Again, it, it really causes me questions and food for thought about the website, because I went there and I only had a few moments to look at it before we came here. And it really raised more questions than gave answers. So I seriously urge, just take your time on this. I mean, you have, you do have time to, to deal with this, and come to a reasonable decision and a reasonable choice that you can understand and won't say, oh, shoot, later. Okay? That's all I'm asking. Thank you, guys. Appreciate that.
This course is not offered by the N-G systems that we already have agreements with, and that is why-
That's correct.
We couldn't, we couldn't, if it was offered through those schools, we couldn't, you wouldn't be asking us for approval.
Correct. So, this particular course, and I do want to point out that this MOU is not a, a contract. We're not required to offer this course from year to year to year. It is our choice of whether or not we want to offer this course. The, again, it's taught by our teacher on our campus. It is simply that the curriculum, the, the materials are provided by Arizona State University. The, when it says that the college or the National Equity Lab will, to the gentleman's point, will manage recruitment and onboarding process, what that means is they're the ones who do the outreach to different districts and state boards across the country, saying, here's what we have to offer, this is what it is, so that you don't have 10 different schools, or however many different schools are represented in here, coming in and, and talking about their, their individual respective courses. So they're the, the entity that is promoting the opportunity for students to access these courses. Their partnership is with these colleges. So the college, in this particular case, Arizona State University, will be the, the institution that awards the credits for students. Our students who would participate in this would get an ASU transcript that shows those courses. We know from working with our partners in N-G that when a student takes courses on a college transcript that are above 100 in level, because anything below 100 is considered remedial, anything above 100 is transferable. So if one of our students chose to take this and decided to go to an N-G school, the Nevada Systems of Higher Education, WNC, UNR, which is primarily where students go, would accept that credit as a transfer credit from Arizona State University. That's done very often. That's why, again, we make sure with our students who are doing their Jump Start and their associate degrees with the Western Nevada, we make sure that they're transferable credits to UNR. So the same thing occurs. We do have students in our current Jump Start program who do go to like UC Davis, who go to Oregon State. So their, their transcripts from the college, whatever college is issuing that transcript, is the important piece, and that's what gets transferred to wherever it is that they choose to go for their continuing education. So in this particular case, in essence, the National Education Equity Lab is simply the, the, the organization that is putting this opportunity together. It's not really the institution in terms of, of who we'll be working with with the curriculum. Arizona State University owns that curriculum, and our teacher ends up being an adjunct professor for that one period to Arizona State University. So it's our teacher who then utilizes that curriculum and actually then ministers the grades, et cetera.
Good evening, Kevin Schwartz. So, I'll try to keep this brief. Anyone who's been to college knows that not all college courses are, you know, created equally. You know, just because it's taught at a university doesn't mean, you know, it's a rigorous class, you know, and a value, if you've ever been to college and, you know, had a few of those courses yourself. The, one of the issues I have is calling it, it's a choice, because only the, you know, the parents and the child get to decide who, who goes to the, to the class, but it's funded by the taxpayer. So that requires all of us to foot the bill for that course. And if that course is teaching something that the community who pays for it disagrees with, I don't really think that's a choice then. So I appreciate the board asking some questions, wanting to look at the syllabus. I think that's, that's a good idea. I don't think there's any rush to push this through tonight. Maybe give us all a chance to review the syllabus ourselves and come back and, and review the issue later. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any, yeah, Don. Well, sorry, hold on, Don. Any additional public comment? Okay, I'm going to close public comment, bring it back to the board. Don?
The State Board of Education has approved this. Correct?
No, sir. The next step that we would take is after the local school board. If districts current, the current process is that if districts want to offer dual-credit opportunities to their students, we go through the process of getting our local school board to approve it. Then we submit an application package to the State Board of Education. The State Board of Education then reviews those materials and ultimately has the approval authority for whether or not it can earn dual-credit in our state. The, the state is looking to shift that, because again, what is occurring is you have 17 different districts typically going through the same process to adopt the same courses. And so, the, there's a process in place that hopefully by the end of this year, the initial approval authority will go through the state. The state will then put out a list saying, here's all of the, the courses that are approved. And then it will still be upon the districts to put that in front of the local school board. But it, it will just, the flow will go the opposite direction.
Okay. Richard?
Just so the board knows, also, I watched several videos, and one from the professor who developed this course at Harvard, and she did stress several times throughout the video that it is a rigorous course. And just so everybody knows, apparently it is a very rigorous course.
Okay, thank you. So we have a motion in a second. We've had public comment. I'm going to call the question. All those in favor? Opposed? I vote opposed. So, it's three to two in person, but I'm not sure where Stacy's at on this.
I vote yank.
So, the vote is four to two. So a motion passes. Thank you, Stacy.
Thank you.
We're going to move on to item 10. Actually, before we do, let me check. Do we need a break? Okay. Item 10, informational update on staffing for the Carson City School District for the 2021-2022 school year. This is for discussion only. We have Dr. Delphin.
Testing. There we go. Good evening, President Cassiopa, trustees, and our audience. Tonight, I come before you to finish what I started last time. I was up here is to report on staffing with regard to this fall. So let me play the slideshow here real quick. So our current numbers of staff, we have 480 teachers, 346 ESPs or educational support personnel, 47 administrators, and about a grand total of 873 staff as of today. Now, that number's going to rise as we fill our vacancies. Oops, sorry. So what are our current vacancies is, we have 18 teachers that we need to hire. That looks like a lot, but let me just explain. We have seven classroom teacher openings, and six special education teacher openings, and five for our ESAR-funded learning loss interventionists, which are TOSSAs, or teachers on special assignment. I do want to reassure the board that the 13 classroom teachers, the first two bullets, we have a contingency plan for those vacancies currently. We have student teachers, we have folks that are in alternative routes to licensure that are ready to go for these positions if we can't find a full-time person in time for next week. So this is something that we do every year. It's not unusual that I have student teachers placed at every site practically across the district, ready to serve as the teacher of record. So, as Valerie Dockery-
I just want to stress, I hope that there's a plan to make sure we have licensed teachers in all of those classrooms before we fill the TOSA positions.
Of course.
I would much rather go without a TOSA position than put a long-term sub in a classroom, and then a kid misses out on their education for the year, or the quality of education.
Thank you, Trustee Walker. That is the marching orders the principals got before they went ahead and hired a TOSA, that the classrooms were filled, those vacancies. So, yes, we have done that to the best that we can. On the classified or ESP- On the classified or ESPN, we need 18. It has been tough to find special education paraprofessionals. We just had a bus driver resign today, so I need three. We will be getting our PERS affirmation with regard to critical need for retired bus drivers and special education teachers sometime this week. So I do have one in the wings as a retired bus driver to come back. And then we have two regular special education, not special education, regular education paras. I'm proud to say we were only down one custodian, because in the beginning of hiring season, we had more custodians to fill, but we're down to one. One safety officer, library media technician, and one bus attendant. Any questions on the ESPs?
Safety officer, is that, what position is that? That's not our school resource officers.
Uh, thank you for the question, Trustee Crossman. This is a revamped position. A safety officer isn't what it is looking like on paper. It used to be somebody that walked the school grounds and made sure, you know, halls were cleared and, you know, everything was safe, doors were locked. But what we're looking for in this safety officer, Trustee Crossman, is somebody who actually handles the high-tech safety operations, which means they're under Mrs. Seer, who needs assistance with all the cameras, whether they're in school or on buses, all the entrance and exit key cards that we are using in some of the buildings, keep in track of software as we need to update our security across the entire district. It's more IT-related, really, than somebody who's walking the grounds. But thank you for the question. We have dean opening at Eagle Valley. The dean that was there got promoted to a vice principalship in Douglas. And we have one nurse that we need district-wide. So the attrition, and just so you know, I pulled this data different from maybe Mr. Stokes when he was in HR. I pulled it from January. So the numbers looked big, because we had 92 total staff that left the district for one reason or another. But I like to go in January as my starting point, because that, to me, starts the hiring season. I could have pulled it later in the year, in the spring, and this number would be about in the 70s. But I like to pull it in January just to start the year. So with that, you can see that we've had 33 resignations from the teachers and 17 retirements. On the ESPN, 26 resignations and 12 retirements, three resignations from administrators, and we had one staff that passed away. So since January 1st, we've had 92 staff leave for one reason or another. Now that said, I was getting asked, why did they leave? So this year, I have some information for you. Out of all those 92, I put a breakdown for you as far as where people actually migrated to or left for whatever reason. So the majority, 34, found employment elsewhere. What that means is basically teachers who shuffle around different districts across Nevada. So the majority of our educators who found employment elsewhere either went and lived, or found work closer to home, or got promotions, or what have you. So we typically do this, what I call the inter-county dance every year, and that number is pretty normal that I see every year. In our classified ranks or ESPs, they usually go to a different employment or business or company. They usually don't stay in education. Very few do if they're jumping out from the district. Nine for personal reasons, and those are mostly medical. Six relocated out of state. Four, we really don't know what happened to. They just didn't give us a good reason. Just so you know, my staff asked principals too, as far as where people went to, or what reasons they had for leaving. We had three new moms that want to stay home with their kids, three going back to college, three miscellaneous that were just random reasons, and of course, one death, which equals 92 staff. Any questions on this slide? So where do we find our staff? The biggest jobs website is Indeed, and we're on it. I would say I also pay yearly subscriptions to college career centers across the nation. So we're advertised in about 400, 500-plus universities across our great nation. We're on Carson Now. We do social media. Mr. Davis helps with that as well. We're on LinkedIn. We're on Facebook. Our own website's a great recruitment tool. Word of mouth is huge. But the last two are really our strength in Carson City, is growing our own people, and with our own student teachers and ARL candidates that really come from our own school district. So that said, that's been really our strength over the years, especially how we've been able to move para pros into teaching. We have been able to get our own students going through EDU 110, the education class that started years ago, and now it's, you know, come into light, and we're reaping the rewards of new teachers coming on board. And little known fact that we do have some alternative routes to licensure people that I've been working with for many years. And these are people who already had their bachelor's degrees in some other field, who now want to be teachers. We've got a great female engineer from Bentley, who migrated from that company and became one of our science teachers at Pioneer, for instance. And so these are second or third career folks that have decided teaching is their actual passion. Questions on that?
No, I just want to say thanks for this slide and the one before. I mean, those are the questions I kind of, you know, I keep thinking of, is why are we losing people?
Right.
And how are we attracting them? One question I have, I guess, is several years back when we restructured our salary matrix, if you will, we bumped up our starting salary for first-year teachers. How do we, how do we sit with, I mean, I'm guessing others probably over the years have maybe made some adjustments too, or we, have they caught up to us or past us, or where are we at with entry-level salaries?
We're still in the pack. We obviously can do better. We can offer more. But that's something that, of course, depends on our budget, which is ever shrinking. It'd be nice to be at 50K as a starting point, but I know that's a dream. But that would certainly entice a lot of new teachers. Money does talk. Incentives go, come and go, but actual starting salaries make a lot of noise, especially with cost of living here in northern Nevada. It's getting not cheaper. It's getting a lot more expensive, as you know. Also want to apologize. Typically, I have a slide as far as where our candidates have come from, what states, what universities, how many have applied. Our new system, online system for applications, that query broke. So I'll provide that to you on an email when it's not broken, and give you a rundown of where our applicants are coming from, but I can't provide that this evening. Any other comments?
Thank you. A good presentation, by the way. But I was wondering, the last time you provided this information about how many retirements and how many people resigned. And as I went through it, there was, looked like five special ed para professionals resigned. I think there's like four retirements. And I'm just wondering, was there a certain reason these five retired? Is it, I know it's a hard job, but was there one common theme? Not being paid enough, too much work? What was the theme behind them all resigning this year?
I'm not sure I'm going to be able to answer that, Mr. Varner. I remember Dr. Przyzynski sitting in my office, and she was looking at her personnel file my first week at Carson City School District, and she looked up from under her reading glasses and looked at me. She goes, Jose, you'll know when you know, meaning you'll know when you want to retire.
With the retirement, I understand.
Right, right. As far as those paras and maybe some of those special education teachers, I have heard, of course, it's a tough job. And, you know, the kids can be a handful. But for their own reasons, they decide to leave on their own behalf. I know, just by my own experience, after 14 years of being at Carson City School District, is the most mobile group that I have as far as mobility are special education teachers. I see more of them ebb and flow and move districts more so than any other group of people.
Well, the reason I ask is, just sort of like Mr. Walker brought up earlier, about is there something we need to do, change, to retain these people? Because I know, anytime you hire a new employee, there's a cost involved. There's a cost of training that's involved. It's not cheap to bring a new person on and train them and stuff like that. And so I was just kind of wondering if there's some common thread through there that we could address, why these people are resigning, so we maybe could change it, so we could retain people a little bit better.
I want to give a shout-out to Dr. Lennox. She is putting together a great PD development for all our paras this year regarding special education and how to handle our difficult students. And that has come to a great support by the Classified Association, because they want more training. So one of the keys is educating our own people to retain them. And I want to, again, shout-out to Dr. Lennox for doing that. I think we, as people, don't know how to handle some of these human development things sometimes, and we need additional supports, training, what have you, to be able to do our jobs well. I know when I was principal, you know, I didn't deal with half the things I did as a vice principal. So the more training I got, the better I was at the job. So I think that's part of retention, Mr. Varner, to be honest, is to continually learn and be better at what we do, so that we feel confident in our jobs. I think no one wants to feel insecure while they're conducting whatever job that they're doing, whether you're a para pro, or a principal, or superintendent. We all want to be feeling confident about what we do. So we're constantly looking at what it takes to retain, or hardest to fill. We are also up against a lot of shortages, you know, that are national. NSHI doesn't produce enough teachers for us across the state, not even for just Clark County, let alone Carson City. So given all those obstacles, I have to say that we go back to growing our own people and making sure that we are all recruiters. I mean, that's really what we do. I recruit wherever I go. And I think we just need to get used to that, and education is, you know, when somebody is needing some work, or maybe a career change, that we try to steer them towards education in some way, whether it's in the educator realm or support staff realm.
Just one other quick question.
Sure.
I'll shut up. Exit interviews, or does somebody conduct an exit interview with the employees that are leaving our district?
I used to have a lot more exit interviews. I can tell you, I don't have as many now as I used to. But they can fill out their own exit interview sheet if they feel like it. I can tell you, I haven't seen that many. I don't know why. I just know that we offer it, but I've not really conducted very many of them.
Any other board questions? Back to you, Jose.
All right. Well, that's all I have. Thank you very much for letting me chat.
Thank you, and good luck.
Thank you.
We need your efforts.
Yep.
Okay, item 11, discussion and review of CCSD Policy 303, Superintendent of Schools, for discussion only. This, I believe, is the policy that Trustee Wilkie asked for us to review. I think last time we pulled up, it might have been 300, and it wasn't what she was looking for. But this one just defines superintendent of schools, assigned responsibilities. And if you look on here, it was adopted in 1979. So it's been sitting around for a while. Not that it's necessarily out of date, it's just been around for a while. So any thoughts on this? This, again, is for discussion only, so we're not, we're not voting on any changes or anything, but certainly if you have some thoughts on what it needs.
Mr. President, I think it looked pretty thorough when I looked through what the requirements of the superintendent are. If we're going to edit it, I would say in number four, we probably would want to update Board of School Trustees to, you know, Carson City School District Trustees.
Yeah, I saw that across the board. It just read, it doesn't read the way we would say things now. Laurel, any thoughts?
Agreeing with Mike to update the language a little bit, but it's not...
Yeah, I don't see anything that's out of date myself. I think it's pertinent. Mike?
I mean, I guess the question I would have would be for Mr. Stokes. Is there anything in there that, anything glaring that you're saying, I'm now spending the majority of my time on X as opposed to this type deal?
Thank you, Mr. Walker. I think that all of these items are pertinent in terms of daily activities, or at least things that occur annually. I think to go too much further into some of the specifics would actually, you know, just be maybe a subcategory under these general ones. So I can't think of anything that comes to mind immediately.
No, thank you. And my thought would be, I'd rather not do subcategories, because then it lends the need to update more often. Okay. So other than just changing some of the wording, such as Board of School Trustees to, you know, our usual language, Carson City.
Did Stacy have anything specific?
Yeah, Stacy, I'm sorry, out of sight, out of mind, I guess. Any thoughts?
Story of my life. I just wanted to really, I wanted everybody to look at it, because we are going to be hiring a new superintendent. So I wanted to make sure that everybody was on board with it. The only thing that I think that, and I don't know how you guys feel, but something may be in there about the strategic plan, since we've been doing that constantly. That would be my only bullet point. But I thought it was pretty good, and I think it allows us to put out the information for looking for a new superintendent. So, but I just wanted to make sure that everybody else did, too.
No, I think that's a good point. Maybe under item four of assigned responsibilities, might be one place where we could add, you know, interprets and communicates the strategic plan.
It also would lend itself to number 10. You probably could fit it in there, because that kind of encompasses all areas.
Yeah. Yeah, I'd be fine with incorporating it into both, you know, four and 10. I don't think we have to go everywhere, but I think it's important enough to say a couple of times. And this has my name to it, Richard, but are my, do you want me to provide you some notes, or do you have this?
Thank you, Mr. President. I've taken a few notes as you folks have been talking. I think I can probably work up a draft and bring it to another meeting, or I could meet with any of you if you had interest.
I was just going to suggest, since we're already going to change the language on number four, might as well just incorporate it in there, and then it's just one revision, if that's all we're going to make.
We use Board of School Trustees in two, three... Four. So, I mean, that is kind of...
I highlighted it the once and then took it out of my brain, so that's my fault.
I'm just, I'm just looking at it even going, I mean, maybe it's the programs of instruct, maybe under 10 is where the strategic plan fits, but also maybe it just fits under all duties as may be specified by law, regulations of the state board, the rules and regulations, and the directions of the, because really, the strategic plan is one of the directions from the Board of Trustees.
Right.
So it seems to me that it fits right under 12.
And maybe in the future, they're not going to have it, and... So maybe we don't need to add that in there. Maybe it's just refresh the language.
Any other comments for Mr. Stokes? I'd say if you have any more comments, just forward them to... I'd say if you have any more comments, just forward them to Renee and she'll get them to Mr. Stokes or to directly you. Okay. We'll bypass Renee. Okay. All right, thank you. Let's move on to item 12, discussion and review of nomination material to be submitted to the Nevada Association of School Boards, NASB to be considered for recognition during the 2021 Annual Conference. This again is for discussion only. And I believe this packet we have in front of us had all the letters in there except maybe the Veterans School Board Member of the Year. Did that get completed?
Yeah, I think...
Is that, is that what this is here?
Yeah.
Okay. Perfect. And I'm assuming everybody's had a chance to review these and...
I'll go through them for proofreading.
Yeah, please.
And do it, but we do have a little bit of time, so.
Yeah, exactly. We have a little more time now.
I'll, if I have any corrections, I'll get them to you.
Okay, fair enough. Any, any more thoughts on this topic, on this agenda item? Seeing none? Approval of the consent agenda. This is for possible action?
I move that the Carson School District Board of Trustees approve the consent agenda as submitted.
Second. Okay, motion. We have a second by Trustee Crossman. Any board discussion on this topic? Seeing none? Any public comment on this topic? Any remote public comment?
No, Mr. Cassiopoul.
Okay, board, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Item 14 are informational items. This is for discussion only. No actions going to be taken. Any board questions related to 14? Seeing none? Item 15, request for future agenda topics. Seeing none? Move on to item 16. We are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.